...to open for us with a prayer.
Arakakopa mungu ayitao pele horibulela kopa no katapelo.
Those that feel healthy to stand up might as well do that. Those who would like to sit, they can sit down.
Baba bakaratan khudirajalo ba emeka dinao bakaye ma baba bakaratan khortapeloe trela baduzi bakatrela bandze.
Thank you.
Baraleboja.
Any volunteer?
Jonale mungu mungue fele okaitao pele nang khubulaka tapelo.
Thank you very much. Amen.
Arerapile. Ntate waruna yalukile wamurana chesu le huse halesa tilena laka chenu. Mudi muaka yalukile mopa no ena en kelyorete disenyona. Ralese chava mudi muaka lukile ndebueta pele barona. Ria leboha mudi muaka lukile ngadita va te mulemo. Te obadi kisa mhorona. Mudi muaka lukile wamurana chesu. Bafema kantataka lukile wabulema shomuti muaka lukile horifatsolem. Te ridiltoka njwaleka se chava mudi muaka lukile. Rerapela ndataka lukile moyawatsebisano moho kopa no ena mura na cheso creste. Ria tevapor moyaoha nalalam. Hali te mudi muaka rekonazolem katres te yarefama. Mudi muaka lukile. Le ronaralese chava mudi muaka lukile. Refa kukusiso mudi muaka lukile yavukisa solem te mulemo. Te obadi kisa tansona mudi muaka lukile wamurana chesu. Rituse moyo halanakothalo khanya puo engule engwe mura na cheso creseka waseva kinsenan. Rituse mudi muaka lukile ngatsolem. Te oridukopa mhuana kali bisola mura na cheso. Nale sepo litumele e tili mhorimurana. Dinsula hau le rontate kopa no banabaho kima. Baba bedi baba raro haba kopa nekali bisola hau utemaharing abona. Ke ka mura rontate rukopa hori. Ria telepele kuhona mudi muaka lukile ngweksoponyanan. Ria leboha ndate bison lele etalele phahame la creste chesu. Mura na limuloki atlan hau finyana. Amen.
Thank you very much, Baba. Can we then...
Rere lebochile fele tata ndate.
Say that the meeting is formally opened.
Rere se teribuzo kopa neyernasi muso jano.
I am told that the mayor is still on the way.
Kesato kubelala hori matoro po kasarato waruna asanana limutiling.
The mayor is going to join us later.
Otlaba analerona mobo kachwanee.
Which makes my opportunity for me to welcome you whilst the mayor is still on...
Sine senaya sebaka sakori kilwa mukele fa mayara waruna asanana limutiling ata.
Yeah, yesterday we heard the president saying that at least we can in fact increase the numbers in terms of the numbers in the hall.
Mo presidente ubulema bani busiko arjano rekannara oketza di palo malebanale hori retsanya palo yaba tababaka emote kaholo.
From fifty to two fifty.
Hor simula mahu fifty hori ya kohu two fifty.
So you are so fortunate that we are allowed to have at least a minimum or maximum of two fifty.
Rereseho jano hori rekannale palo yaba tababaka fi kan kopalo kholoya two fifty.
But bear in mind to put on our masks.
Me rehakola hori retsua lerentzire zenyadi masketsa rona.
And try to give the social distancing amongst ourselves or in between us.
Lohudira hori rennerentzire kato khane moharacharona.
Okay, let's first introduce ourselves.
Jano rebatahikitsisi hori kiorona bomaa.
Eh, myself, I am Nongo Simvana.
Nali nalameke Nongo Simvana.
I am serving in this social development portfolio committee.
Ki dira lamop portfolio committee eno ya eh klabololoajo.
I'm given a responsibility to chair it.
Ki neyulebi karabelofano.
Yes, I'm coming from Eastern Cape Komani Evetlisi.
Ki zawako komani ko Eastern Cape?
So ngyateta.
Skajalo haribuyara teta.
Odwaké.
Melafa koncejalo.
We will allow everyone of you to also introduce themselves when they are speaking.
Retlo kopa le tla mungu le mungu waro walonahu ikitsisi maina alona halupua.
And also they are free to use any language that they are comfortable with.
Ibele kapeloe holulese chile khudirisa puo ipe fele oholulese chile kubata kubuaka yoné.
Then the honourable members will introduce themselves.
Me batokeki barona le bo nebata ikitsisi.
Se buya le ekapa ekapalament.
Retzwa koka pa kopalamenté.
Over to me.
Dumelang.
Eh greetings.
Dumelang.
Greetings.
Legay. Ah, ererapila ah libitsola kake Anastasia Motau.
My name is Anastasia Motau.
Ki emong wale logo la committee ya social development.
I'm one of the members of the social development committee.
Ki zawa kile chaute.
I hail from Chaute.
Kialibo.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greetings everyone.
Dumelang lo kaba kaiso.
My name is Tembile Songo.
Lila lameke Tembile Songo.
A member of the social development portfolio committee.
Ki le logola eh portfolio committee ya klabololoajo.
And I'm from Pumalanga.
Nenna ki zawo Pumalanga.
Thank you.
Kialaboja.
Upson.
Eh dumela.
Minjani.
Legay.
Minjani.
Eh legay bahaitsu.
Ah waname enfuki. Vito ni kensani waka bilangulu.
Naki nilalaka kikensani waka bilangulu.
Ni member ra ya committee of social development.
Ki le logola eh committee eno ya klabololoajo.
Eh ni oma ah lipopo agian.
Ki zawako limpopo kogiyan.
Nita ki ngofu koba konahalin na muni.
Ki tumela lajona tenhalo na fano kumpie.
No pumela konawina mita ki.
Ki resona fala hori lolo nali tumeleze se.
Ena nipumela kui tabula borisana kache inanawina.
Ibele resona fala hori retlo kubuisana lekhudirisa nasentja moho lelona.
Yesu kalaitaba ekaituanan. Se ni kense shneni lhaisekan ni maranda shnen.
Ki lelewechile fele tata homenachane.
Eh, before I can introduce myself, I think the chairperson have said we must use eh these different languages that we can able to express ourselves.
Pele kesemala ikitsisi eh kia tshala fana horo modula stile urila are lokadrisa puo ngolewa eloba tana kuybuaka yoné.
Minan bedora minani Jane waka mangani.
Lila lameke Jane?
Waka mangani.
Waka mangani.
Nye, abe leno. Minana mina ne sava akakomiti le ya social development.
Eh lenaki mudi ready mo eh committee eno ya klabololoajo.
Ni oma konakala ah northwest abo jana.
Ki zawa hori monorthway kikonorthweste kwa bojana.
Ni tiambago re sukurana muntsha metarza ke langofu.
Rere resona fala hori letsa tilena la kumpieno eh retla litumele lamoho.
Ohre takubulakulene baana.
Eh ikaha hori tla berubuaka baana.
Nakesh.
Rera kialaboja.
Dumelang.
Greetings.
Le tchokile.
How are you?
Myself, I'm good and I'm excited to be here.
Lenaki tchokile sentja fele tata ki tumela tata koba kela fano.
Ik is ahbare lid kizela operman.
Ki na eh me operman.
Ik is from Inuit camp, Isastir province.
Ki zawako eh book eh kapabuko ne.
I'm looking forward to having robust and good discussions here today with the public.
Rere libilepele kotsara kang e amutu ta moho.
And thank you once again that we can be here.
Ibele resona fala hori tla fi kela kholu kunsimochi yoné.
Hello.
Dumelang.
Good morning everybody. My name is Alexandra Abrams.
Eh dumelan lo kaba kaiso nilalaka ke Alexandra Abrams.
I'm originally from Cape Town in the Western Cape, so I'm very excited to be here in sunny northwest.
Naki zawako kapabuko neko eh Cape Town ki tumela kobelele fano mobo konupirima letsa tilene klabile bojana.
And I look forward to a robust and honest and open conversation from all of the Cape.
Nerlibilepele kotsaramo tatalo na wabo tchopi long lubuyalu susuluchile.
Moweni.
Eh dumelang.
Khoyimura.
Dumelang bahaitsu.
Good day.
Legay.
I'm Honorable Letitia Aris.
Ki na mo koteke.
I'm from George in the West Cape.
Naki zawako George ko kapabupirima.
I'm a member of this portfolio.
Ki le logola portfolio committee eh.
Thank you.
Ki kialaboja.
Thank you very much.
Eh batatekebar na ra leleboja ki lelebuchile.
Then if it's the case you are done with the introduction, at least you know most of us.
Referizo kikitsisi jano Louisi bunsijaro na ra itzani.
Also together with the backup staff, that is the officials, but we won't waste time by introducing them.
Ernali maloko amang arona bailenba tsachezi barona me hariki tarsenyana koka hori le bo nebe ikitsisi.
Yeah, others are outside, others are inside because of the arrangement of the hall.
Baba bakonke ba baka fating kan tlaya di chulo khanya zaholo ene yarona.
Others are at the back.
Baba we bakwa morajo.
We are all together.
Sore moho fano.
Okay. Then we do have a proposed agenda with us.
Jano sere sotwari fano faki agenda eighty two ene bahaitsu.
We are still waiting for the mayor to come in. We are told that she is in the car.
Rasa tane remete mayara hori atener fetah kubolela horo omoko loin.
She's going to welcome you.
Utllo kula mukele.
Including ourselves.
Le khamochala le rona.
We'll give her space in the agenda.
Sore tla mofasebaka moteka agenda yarona.
And then we'll get into trying to give you the background of and the purpose of why we are here.
Morajo khamor tla lona ya ceris cerimusato le morajo lalebaka lakoborele fano.
We hope that you do have documents in front of you interpreted in a language that you understand.
Resona fala hori le tchoridito komani moholo na moweyla hori diranole tsumopu e luekhalo khanya.
We'll just do the sort of a revision or revival of the document in terms of giving you the highlights on what is the amendment dealing with.
Se retlo kusidiro fano farretlo kholo na ya fele dinka kholu lekhosobokanya tokomani eno eh iling ser kholulela hori molau onu owa eh klabololo ya molau kakawa tota ubuaka e.
And then we will allow you to have the inputs.
Me morajo khamor tla le tla horo rona lonse di tshailo zalona.
And also tell us whether you support the bill or you don't support the bill. And maybe state the reason of why not supporting it so that we can take it with us and into parliament.
Halufeza kubuya hori alu amukele molau kakawa ukhosa halu amukele milunse mabaka hai lehori halu amukele hori mabaka aworokona khwaja ya rekhwa seka seka.
Where is the mayor?
Ukay manayo.
Okay, let's continue.
Arretwele mbahaitsu.
Can I remind you and revive with you on what the bill is about?
Anga lo trote la kaburipana fele hori molau kakawa onu waruna ubuaka e.
One of other points that the bill deals with is the parental responsibilities.
Engoyadi lotse molau kakawa onu ubuanga tsona kibu ikarabelo jawo botzadi.
As parents that are seated here, we all know that we are supposed to be responsible for our kids.
Jaka batzadi baba ntsingfano faro tlera ije hori retshanezo konnalema ikarabelo ka bana barona.
I will, I will stop there. The mayor has just arrived.
Kita emafo kahone mayara ohorochile.
Mayor, we will request you to welcome us.
Eh otlakopa hori atla hori mukele.
Thank you very much. I will proceed after the mayor that has proceeded.
Kita trolala ha asana ho bua iling mayara barona.
Kialaboja. Dumelang bahaitsu.
Greetings everyone.
Dumelang ali the officials etaro nababatsoanko parlamenté.
We want to say a greeting to our officials from the parliament.
And pardon me.
Me koka paru inshwarele.
Kamantaha nabatbaban piriling ridira constituency work.
Eh ronari dira di tiro tshanzo kudira kamantaha iling bataba ilongorike tapilake bo neke tshanzo kiri diri tsho kamantaha.
This is also part of constituency work.
Me slesan so kikaron.
Nikia pareto kahoso ma kama otoko komibileng kuali tainshwarela bahaitsu.
Ki nikia pareto hori kyohebiela komibileng eh just going to the street the way I'm dressed. I just dress for that part, so please forgive me for my appearance.
Ki inti ki bueleza kireleone elitlenka yoné mohoro na moma kwasiliski constituency work.
So I want to also say that even the reason why we are here is for the purpose of constituency work.
Kahore lona lelese chava uf entrusted us kamapilo aluna.
Because you as members of this society, you have entrusted us with your lives.
Bana ke bana barona.
So the, the kids are our children.
Banabau ke bo ne puso ya rona ya kamuso.
And then these children are actually our future government.
Kajalo ke ronar tshanzingana le li chebelo pele ra molda banaba.
So we are the ones who are supposed to monitor them and actually have a full view for the future.
Ena mohoba monitarin nohoba molden kharona.
And as we...
They are from different socio-economic families.
And as we monitor them and then develop them, we know that they are all coming from the different... Raizho krobota baza mama emong afarlo khane abutselo.
Ena rili puso retshanzo rabonahore wana omongu le omongu ohola sente.
And as...
Keto ikana yakhache hali hapele nyana hali.
And as a government, we have to make sure that these children are raised in the most proper manner. They are the ones who will make a choice as they grow.
Se root was esungu sa education isere, each and every individual is born with dignity, including or even an unborn fetus. When it's born, it's born with dignity. It will be up to that person, hori, is he going to conserve the dignity that he or she was born with or would I nyatlanza fele inna le tainshwarela in sixty-six and ninety-nine innaselo se sili.
Konalisiru twa sesengoa sa tu twa sesiremungu le mungu yo obela huan obela hua analysis riti. Kajalo hansa achola ke ne tota eklenho ikhopela hori ah otla tuleta botshelo jawa khahotka siriti se usa abelehoinkasone khosa otla dira jaa.
Ki ka moki rin wana ramo kesejo wa tlakané. Ena habatswan abatsukuma lapengaswanan ramo taya koto khamobonyanimbache hapele hali choise ikana yakhache.
That is why we say that it takes a village to raise a child and what we do is we take care of the child, develop them, continue with life, and again, they are the ones who will make a choice as they move on into the future.
Kahore yalo bahaitsu la mukele tumo ma kwasilis local municipality dincadi bofilwe putuluhang engage optimally in the topic ele tla vengli tshaga kanilo nemuli zatingla kumpie.
So in a nutshell, those are the ways of welcome. We want you to feel free and be happy and engage in a robust debate and have fun.
Kialaboja.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, thank you, mayor. At least now we feel at home.
Rere lebocheze mayara waruna tata jano riguka ra mukele sechile.
We heard that you are coming, we are on your way, coming to join us.
Nerukila horo motse len otla kopa nafano.
We really appreciate that you have managed.
Rere leboja tata hori okhon.
We know that our schedules are very hectic, especially towards this time.
Ibele raizho hori ditula khanya zaranza botshelo se dingude kakhame itse. Eh me releboja lamazapawa jere.
Okay, thank you very much once more. Mayor, we have already introduced ourselves unfortunately, and we, we are unable to repeat that. You'll hear that so-and-so was here that will assist you to know us. Thank you very much.
Se teriki tsi si se me mayara so hariki tara bueleza seu miri tumela kape hori osoto khorochile so haro tumela retsua lerakatualala.
Okay, okay. We were on eh point number one in terms of what the bill deals with.
Nerulemon kenyan tlaya khoromolau kakawa o.
Which have indicated that it deals with the responsibility, parental responsibility.
Hor ubuaka e mi kilaka super horo ubuaka me ikarabelo abutzadi.
I know that you've got kids, all of you that are here. If you don't have kids, you have seen on how difficult it is to bring up kids.
So kia ije horo lucha balilo nafano lona le bana eh me hai le hori halona bo ne lwa ije hori kothata tota kohudisa bana.
Even the mayor quoted that it takes a village to raise a child.
Totale ne eh mayara ofesa kubuya fano horo wana kesejo wa tlakané.
Eh, the other point that is the bill dealing with is eh...
Ninka yango erutlo koto takayona eh rebatahile bafa.
Child marriages.
Ki khanya konyadi siwa khabana.
Especially illegal marriages and forced marriages.
So kholo bukholo manyalo a ilohorakaka famolawon ki manyalo apateleze.
In our days, we've got this situation of battering with our kids.
Momi ke e no eh ernalakhanya yahoro utoka fasabotshelo jorona kahudirisa bana.
Because sometimes we need money that is just like cash in our hearts.
Kaboraka nago okrohoru bata ma dimosa ke hori se usa khorne.
I'm not going to be racist, but I will tell you that there are these shops that at times are opened in our townships and villages.
Kakena moyawabo cha ba me kbatla kobelela hori kadina kotsede moma ke shine arona konnalemi fita mingwi ke e ya ma benke la ikela ngabutwe.
You will send your child to go and work there.
Oromela wana wahakohora ayehu dira te.
Because you as a parent, you enjoy that thing of the child bringing things and groceries from that.
Hor kahone we na jaka motzadiwa itumeleha unso bo na wana tla haya kisa di krosa ramadi diyoze di khorkeha.
You don't sometimes even ask where do you get this, my child?
Kanakone hara baboze lekoba bota hori diloze udisakai.
Instead you send a child to go back again.
Ra ra muisata te enkapeku kona ilete.
At times because of our friendship and relationship with the families.
Me kadina kotsede kankaya botzala lidikamanu tser nane zonalema logo alelapa.
You had that wish in mind or you have that wish in mind that one day my kid will get married to that son of particular person or family.
Uklala motso analekeleze e moten kapelewa kahakhora eh ikite wana akanialuaki se mama ngwalelapa lelelelelele yo humile.
Not looking at the age the child is getting to marry to.
Resa lebo horo wana tshanezo hori anyalu alidinwakadi leka.
Maybe it's an old, old, old man.
Ufikela kana kongwe motshoten ele monnamoholo fele yuto fetse.
And the child maybe is around thirteen years old.
Wana enasanana ankhamashi alidinwakadi kana fete.
Let's not do that and be cautious in doing that.
Aru sedirinjalo bahaitsu aru nenkele choko.
When you see a child is trying to get into the adolescent stage and, 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 and that teenage phase, you must try and give them lessons and inform them on what is it that is going to happen.
Hawo wana wana hansa achola alu mudi wachenza boroba mudi wachenza boshia kenango yahoro omone di tu tse di butshaka zabo tselo hori atakhule sentja hansa zena moho zonejalo.
Don't just send her to, to go and, and meet that papa because that papa is going to give you something. Ganti at the end, ultimate, and you are sending her to be get married to that gentleman.
Oska moromela hori ayehu kopa nali monna yo yorupilenka yana kandekaba kareklene kanyahora kopa nale nejalo yahona hori bakufileza banyalan.
There is also this thing in our areas or in South Africa or Africa as a whole.
Mama filon arona khosa mo Africa borak khosa mo Africa yo khe kapa konnalebo mo yobo ngutijo.
Which there is nothing wrong in terms of maybe the kids don't have parents, maybe.
Kahona butata hara tamo kanyanya hori bat bana kano gungu kellelo hori khorne khabana batzadi.
Then there is, there are these people that will come from abroad and take our kids and adopt them.
Obobona kota batobazako mosija batla kuytela banabarona hori bayako bahudi sa jaga babo.
Then you just give those kids to those particular person that you don't know even their whereabouts, where they stay, and how, what type of people are they.
Le rona berisese na banabarona batobawo se ba ije hori kibomangre se ije hori banakai jalo nijalo.
There is a process that needs to be followed, which is legal.
Konali emolau di chulo khanya e kafamolawon e tshanezo horo latelema.
And you must have a consent with the kid to move or remove eh or him from the household or from home.
Ibele kshanezo kone lituma la no faharakaha kholo wana yo hai le horo utlo kufudisiwa gamo kha o ayeho kudiswa kongosele.
In most of the regions that we have already visited, in two regions that were visited.
Mody kholo di wizeri de teze mohosepe de zera sa tshanu kudiya tela.
ECD seem to be a challenge in our areas.
Koba nala eketi di ECD di kolosa kudisa bana ke makata.
There's a lot that the people are raising in terms of the ECD.
Konnale ma tata manza batoba kakisanga di ECD.
But we know for a fact that eh there are processes that you have to follow so that your ECD is being registered in a way that is accepted and be funded by the department.
Ner raizho horo konnalemola oro tshanezo horo latelelasentja wakachokomela hori ECD yarona e kafamolawo le hori di ECD se udisake duakama di kaza la e tshaneze.
Now we are in the process of eh...
Khanyonya koko panya di ECD, koto koso social development eh hori di tene moli fapingla tu.
We have also to have information about that.
Retla nali cerimusato kaxase.
This one of the foster care order.
Eh kange no yattaolo ya kohudisu akabana ke batomohongo baisa batzadi babone.
We are also sometimes having challenges on it.
Li one e irifa ma tata asengana kasepe.
Maybe your brother passed away or your sister.
Khoe okshoka faliseke moholo khosa kya kai zadiyo.
Then you have to go and register those kids under the foster care grant.
Obotshanezo hori jano wako kudiswa banabau hori bata bakonaha wakrantia koba tchokomela.
But before maybe they were getting a child support grant.
Me pe kongo pe la kamo bana bana wa child support grant.
Which are different.
Iling di dolozepe de zeri sa tshane.
But there are also processes to be followed before you, you allow the child or any the, the department is able to allow the child to get under the foster care grant.
Me khonali di tuja khanyo zidi chwanizohora la teleba, za khodira horu bana ba khono khobe wa kafatasha tuja khanyo e ya child foster grant.
Sometimes you get kids not having their documents that are relevant for them to be registered.
Ma tata ikho horu bana ufikela basna, ma kwa lo, ah dira horu ba chwanela kela khokwadisiwa molenana onelele ntsenzang.
We also have to be aware of those things.
Chwanizohora la di loze utoka, le khoyizika zon.
The adoption have already touched?
Ki sateki buileka khodisa khabana, ke ba zadi baisen babone.
In our culture, as Africans, we are not used to adopt kids that we don't know.
Most of the zanazaga ma Africa, hara trela kha nyeye khoyize la bana khoyi khodisa zabo ne se barona.
Especially kids that we don't know.
Eh kholo bukhola hai le bana barasa bai ti.
We are used to the one of taking your sister's kids.
Kanyi ziretweze fela khosa ya yo ele khongo wa kai zedi ya ke.
Or your relatives' kids.
Khonza ele ngwana wa balu sigalwa khon.
But we are also encouraging people to do the adoption in a legal process.
Me jano kapero, kota leza ba tohoru, ba itele bana ba we kati tuja khanyaya simula o, ba ba yu khodisa zidaka bana babone.
You'll get frustrated when you visit these centers.
Hawa etela ma filo a obalen koro onu, uh uh kusaba butoka tata.
Kids are staying there abundant with no parents.
Ufikela bana bantiko, obana hori ke bana balla kiliwa, kaba na ba tadi.
When it's Christmas times or big days or these days that we are celebrating, they don't have anyone to look after and make them happy.
Hai le kadina kotsa bo di cresmo, so khosama la tsimanga ama kholo adikite komele to, khabana opa yo ba itume la ngle ne.
And once you've visited those centers, I tell you, you'll come with a car full of the kids that are from the centers.
Me kia khobelela, hono ka etela di sentara zidi ntsenzala, hau bua, ho kadi ra kha horu otla kakolu, itte zebana bawo, muhopolwa khon ofe toki la kabo.
But there is also a process on that.
Me kape li temo, khonali tuja khanyo chwanizohora la teleba.
Social workers will visit your place.
Ba di redulu ah, ho bata chwanela kha horu bai telela ele lapa la khon.
Because other, other parents are taking those kids from the centers to make them sex slaves.
Baba we ba tadi, ba tadi bana khosamo di sentaran zenezo, bayahu dira, bayahu ba dirisa kaza la yahoregi sa mebele abo.
So that's why it has to undergo the process that is allowed by the.
Ki kalonale bakalelo horu chwanizohora la telela di tuja khanyo e beluense mula o, hahu diruwa se ntsenzalo.
The unfortunate part is that the mayor has to be excused.
Eh remasuabi horu meyara o chwanizohora, kholiwa khosama ya.
But I know for a fact amongst us, there are committee members, ward councilors that are present.
Meki tumela horu moharakarona, ho katsa khonalema loka adi committee di ward counselor ba balintefano.
Because all what we are saying must also be in line with the local municipality sections and policies.
Kahone soja serisi buan resesi residira, so chwanizohora seridumala, ne di karoloza simula o, ezabomasepala, zedi kuwa di luin.
If you are an ECD practitioner.
Faile horu omota ma isiwa ECD.
You have to go to the municipality and request maybe a place to run the ECD.
O chwanizohora ya guho masepala, weha khokopa se cha, khosama le fe lo, le uke ho zama isang ECD.
I know that there is this problem of rates and services that you have to also pay to the municipality.
Ra izo horu khonalema tata adi rate, eh liditi relo, zero le horu chwanze radiduela masepala lefa khonze njalo.
Whilst maybe you haven't managed to get even this funding that you are supposed to get.
Me o chwanala kahu dira njalo, mis, khonze khonze njalo usa amuchela khongo tsehete oya madi, ewe thoka.
What we are going to do when you talk and make your presentation, we will give you a certain minutes.
Meri, sere kheu si dira khoru halu bua, li khalo sariklo kholenaya mechoto ele malwa.
Then I told you that there is a backup staff at the back.
Jano kilewalele zohora, renaleba dirba o baramenu ke ngua komoraho.
If you feel that you haven't managed to talk all what you wanted to say.
Hawa kanya horu khongo hawa bua ho tche, ho non obata khon bua.
You are allowed to do a submission to that table.
Ole kwa la, miwise panpiru koho bo.
Or maybe you missed something and you have forgotten because of the stage fright.
Khonza khongo khonali seu so lebezi khosi buaka onono tchile hau bua.
It's still open for you to submit all what you think you have forgotten. In a language that you feel free that you should use.
Osanza noka bana ya panpiru mo kya no kwa di leso, non obata khosi buaka buo, e oholo lese kilekhon dirisa.
Then after that, we will allow the department, is the department present here with us?
Memra khomo.
Social development?
Re tala lela lefa pala, khabolo loa, ho social development department, eh iting?
Ukon.
Eh iting che?
Ukobi.
All right. Okay, it was gonna be easy for us if you were in front, but it doesn't matter as long as you are going to listen, ubezinglebe wonke, and answer the questions that will be raised.
So re tla kopa horu oreze, unetze ben kha hoodwa, ikokhono khara ba di pozo zedi kabin dibudu izwe.
But as I have said already, the purpose of coming to here is the bill itself.
Me iting horu ubuikalelo bukholo ba khoborelefa, nerutlo khubuaka mula kaka ngwa u.
That's why at the end of your input, you must tell us whether you support it or not support it.
Kelo nali bakala, horu hau feza khubuwa ukonela, rebulele horu awa amuchela mula, kago ngwa khonza khau amuchele.
Okay, then I will give over the hands now. I'm expecting people that are ready to have the input to come to the mic.
Re kopa matoho, baba baling kholo lese kilekhon khosi mula khubuwa, ba tla tamo microphone noha tla khubuwa, ba kopa matoho, bona hori kibomang.
Can, can I see the hands?
Aloka choleza matoho. Aloka choleza diatla.
No hands? Oh, well, if there are no hands, just tell us that you support the bill.
Hai lo horu kahoba choleza matoho.
You can just say lele to.
Re tseheta.
Okay, Tata, you can come forward. And, and Papa, Puti, I will call you Puti, I can't say Tata to you. And then who else?
Eh akonale amang matoho.
There's the third one? Oh.
Sorry.
Yes, no problem, no problem. Okay, so far so good, there are three hands. Okay, let's give those three hands. When you speak, you must take out your mask or take away your mask and then put it back when you are done.
Me halu bua, re tla kopa horu lonsa maski, halu ferizo khubuwa loka ubuseza.
Okay, thank you, over to you, Baba.
Sebaka kesa khon touch.
Thank you, Tata. Ah ki bua ki dumedi sa buetapi barona.
I want to say a greeting once more to our leaders.
Le kha muhoba bereki muhoba runaba si chava.
And our coworkers from the society.
Na ki Tabi Somidupi, ki kaka kotlaki zopoko Ward fourteen.
I am Tabi Somidupi from Kexdop in Ward fourteen.
Ki secretary of Ward Committee.
I'm the Ward Committee Secretary.
Ah di loze mema Vana, hansa di bua di butoka kha horu.
Things spoken by Ms. Vana are very, very important.
Ma rokhonali zedi unzeli horu, ho thoka hala horu, diteli shebuaka litu lelenchoch.
There are some which we need to actually pay a particular attention onto them.
As I was listening, Hansa bua, honali moa ilen atashating.
There is something that she touched as she was speaking.
Are na kongwe, di loze di ira halam, horu, ho, sellelese, khonali butokuzeveka pa ma tata moten hascha basarun.
Saying that some of the things that actually causes problems within our society, lawlessness.
Ki butata ba bana baruna, bogai klan ba inela bo sugar daddy.
Is when our children give themselves over to sugar daddies.
Well, she never mentioned the word sugar daddy, but now it is like that, that now our children, even at the age of thirteen years, you find themselves, eh lo horu nam, they are in line or bahtuze bon tateba ba khulungu kabo.
Khaka addressalefa ku sugar daddy, meto tarabona se bana basidi ra, horu, habasase badidin ngwaha thirteen, fourteen, ba ineleze bon tateba o, horu, inne ba bana baba chokomela.
I think that now, koyakala baka leo, la horu ba tubo sugar daddy bana, in most cases, they are not the South African inhabitants.
Ufikela ele horu bo sugar daddy bana, ba ma tata ibilaki horu hasa banini bamo Africa borua.
There are people from outside.
Ke ba thoba zanquante.
Knowing that when you open a case for that kind of the person.
Jano hau yahu bulakai zekatanole, mutyon ntsenzalo.
That person is not known and even the fingerprints is aheim, uh uh, so, ah, 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 iba South Africa bonabon.
Hai zi mutyon yo, we, they can't even locate their fingerprints because this is not a South African.
So according to my poor understanding or knowledge.
Kajalo koyakafa, na kisinki kalo khanyo lekhoyizi di lokate.
I think that now some of the departments, like the departments of Humafas.
Di loze di chwanan elele fa pala, mereriyasela hai.
They must tighten the border so that now this kind of the sugar daddies, they should not come in our country.
Ba chwanize balawo le melilo, ana kasa la eh khamenzen tata horu bo sugar daddy baska khonahotze.
When they come in South Africa, they must come with the law, knowing that now if they commit an offense.
Haba tamo Africa borua, ba izo horu, haba taja namolao, obele horu, haba kadi ra eh di kolo mula.
They will be arrested.
Batatuwaro.
Ah ki bua yana kaba kala hubani.
I say this because.
Uh, we have got where we are staying or where we are living.
Ko ro na renanting.
We have lot of the so-called my friends.
Renale ba thobale banyze bana horu ribiza na.
Bo my friend.
Bo, bo my friend.
And those people, most of them.
My brother from another mother.
Thank you very much.
Ah ucha he.
You find that the very same people, we as parents, we send our children to different shops to go and buy the stuff that we need in the house.
Kela ele horu, bo ne ba thobanzanjalo, roma bana barona koho bono, horu bayahu horu koko boni, di loze di thoka moten kantu.
And then you find that now, they are looking at our children.
Oboba na horu, ki banyze baba iliba bana barona li.
They go to an extent of even enticing them by giving them some of the things when they see that now. This kind of the child, in most cases, she used to buy small bread, she used to buy small milling mill, and they take advantage and say that these people, they are suffering at all.
Jano baba simula, ba she ba haba zamo ba simula baba na horu bana barona, rekana ra ba ngoka, eh lo ho ba hippies, ba simula baba na horu, haba na baka, se xesiniya, khosa bopi, jo bunye, bakana baba na zedi tunanya, ana kahona ra bana horu, ibile kateba sokola baba nseja.
And then after that, the child becomes a twareka, motenka, liraba la chwanala mufuto yaru.
And then the child actually gets caught up in that whole scenario.
At the end of the day, you find that now our children are being sexually assaulted by the people who are not known in their country.
Komoraho, oboba fikela ele horu bana bana barona, xose tohoru wa la, noa lebo ne fela, ele ba tabara sa bai ti, eh ba ba so takaka neredi ko.
That's why I'm saying that now, the Department of Humafas must also tighten some of the boundaries so that now when the people they come from outside, they should be known in their country and they should follow the constitution of the South Africa.
Ke so se re ring, eh lefa palorona la mereriyasela hai, le kha kha ma zedi loomi loa, ne horu ba thobano ba haba zena moten kana kaya rona. Ena kha nyaho horu ba itiwi jano, ibile khwiziyo horu, haba kato la mula, khota bereko nolebo.
And then one another thing, I think that now also the department, yeah legislature is also taking part in this.
Sa e we kapera batla horu, elele fa pala, kota thomo la, olole onelekeleze eka rolo.
According to my knowledge or now, as much as I've been in the leadership in the world.
Me na, koyakafa kisinka ten, malebana libueteli di pele, moliha fatse.
There's not, there's been no.
Modi wading.
There's been no time whereby ne kutuadi ward counselor zaronakapa, bomeyara barona ba talosa kama, ba tubana horu, khonali milao, epa situ ho na ba thoba bakata khudula mo South Africa.
Hakisi kujukli ba iteli di pele, ba di wote khonza eh baba we ba talosa hori, jano oso tokhonali milao, eh eh kha kisi songe, eh kuwa di luwa yahora, haba thobano ba ba katze na moten kana kaya rona.
Or there's something, I think that now the kind of the criteria that we can use.
Khonza, muhamongo roka udirisang, hai si loa ne kujukli opeka o, sepeka o.
Is that we as the community leaders in the world.
Ro na jaka ba iteli di pele ba, ba ah, himo ten hadi wote zaronak.
Whenever that there is a shop of my friend.
Fa khonali le bengelela my friend.
I don't say that now we should fight those people, but now let us try to understand and take the addresses where my friend has opened up a shop.
Hakire relu elebo, meki ra horu, akere zeyengi addresses abo, ne ko ba butengi ma bengela, ah abonete.
And go to our municipalities more especially, um, under the leadership of the, of the speaker of the council.
Eh reberi yako ho bo masepala, eh reahu bua le eh musa khota wako masepale.
We want to try to understand that now, in this kind of the address, there's my friend who has opened up a shop.
Re ba re re re, mo addressing enue eki chere, khonali my friend mo, yo butengi le bengi.
And now we want to know that this man, he's in this world or he's in this country by law or not.
Re batla khwiziho horu amutyon yo, onamo wading enue eyaro na, khonza a uze moten kana kaya rona, katse la e kafamola wongi.
If we can follow such kind of the things, we'll find that now sometimes it don't be any problem that now that every time, every moment, we amend the bills.
Re tla khonahotira, horu harakala telela di loze nuze, re tla khonahora, rebona horu kadina kotsotche, harakita thala renela, khon meka meka na lema tata ano abon, abara baka la ngon.
And this kind of the sexual assaults abane, dia, di abane defela, re tzeba horu mori shopon zen, ki bo manle manle maba balintemuka mula.
And then these sexual abuse cases will then be reduced and will come to know as to who are here legally.
So now that's why I'm saying that the Department of the Legislature is also taking part.
Ke so ne sekireli one, elefa pala kota thomo la, olole ne liza ka rolo.
By not teaching the community or by not coming to the community and tell them that now when you see this kind of the people, these people there are here by law.
Kahonza rutiba, to, khosa koba taba botali, ele ma loka asa chaba horu, halu bana ba thofano faro chwanizohora, inne ba tababa bala fano faro, kafamola wongi.
Yano re kopa horu department eki erituse.
So now we are appealing, asking for a help from the department.
Yeah, so suba kaida, one other thing is that now, uh, renali Department, yeah, yeah, Social Development, thank you that you have come, guys.
Yeah, so buka nyaja nong, eh ra izo horu rali, lefa palorona, tabolo loa, horu, lebo kala ho bulit lefano.
Um, in most cases, as the Ward Committee Secretary.
Jaka mokwale diwa eh, eh, committee award.
The Department of Social Development in, I don't say that in all the provinces, but now, I'm saying in my province and in my municipality, it is what it is being used.
Mo eh, moli fa pe la rona la tabolo lole, horu, hakire se nisidira kha, modi profesi zotso, ke meki ra horu, ro na moli fa filo nglaro na, ki seu sentin sidire.
When there are food parcels to help the community.
Fa khonali di passeleza di jo horu, na dieho abelema loka asa chava.
You'll find that now the social development, they consult with the ward counselors.
Ota fikela horu lefa pala, tabolo loa, horu, ba simula ba to kisa na lead ward counselors.
I don't say that it's wrong, but now, what I'm saying is that my cry is that the very same ward counselors, they will never ever call the ward committees, like for an example, you find that now, the ward committees, they take almost three to four, five years not holding up the meeting with the council.
Hakire eh, ho posa khodira njalo, mesake ba tla khonza talosa ke hori, khota zalu baka lulu tille tille kana kotsede, o ufikela horu ba iteli di ba di ward counselor, haba chwaridi kopa no le ba tohoru ba bisanelebo.
Now that way that we cannot aru nam, read ward committee members, em, most of being, yano uchalo horu, the Department of Social Development, banta di food parcela, ba di fadi counselora, di counselora, they give it to their families and their people.
Then ufikela horu lefa pala, tabolo loa, horu, bone banta, di jo ba di naya, eh di ward counselora, bone ba ba di rang, ba ba tza, di jo zeni zon, khonali horu ba di ne ma loka asa chaba, ba di naya, ba malaba abon.
Uh, by law, by the Municipal Structures Act one-one-seven of nineteen ninety-eight.
Municipal Structure Wa Ward one-one-seven nineteen ninety-eight?
That is the act.
So uki mula.
And then under section seventy-two to section eighty.
Karo ya tenya eh seventy-two to eighty.
That establishes the ward committee members.
Ibuaka eh, ma loka adi ward committee.
Yeah, Baba, masmasize, who's section seventy-two, sma yeke.
Mama.
Smasi, let's. Opting here, but it's not. Let's masizele. Bahu hele onda se.
Baro bankwale butoka.
Oh, askis, but now I had to say this because now, I'm the ward committee by law because I've been elected by the community.
Ki chwanizohora khubuasenisa kahon ne tota, na ki, eh, olelo kala committee award, kafamola wongi, ibile ke thopilo ke ma loka asa chava.
They elected me because they entrust that now I'll protect them in every circumstances of the world.
Bana thopila jana, horu ke ba sirilaze, moma emongo kha abat kela.
Okay, seventy-two to section eighty.
Seventy-two koyaho eighty.
Sma yeke la.
Okay, all right, thank you.
They won't know until unless they are also in the municipality.
Okay, so now the law it says now, as the ward committee members, we attend by law.
Kajalo mula wa, bua jalo horu, jaka ma loka adi ward committee, eh, rebulele la kima mula.
Retain. We attend in number.
Oh, oh, re, re, paloyaro na ke lisube, mula waria.
And the chairperson is the counselor.
Me eh, modula situlo, eh chwanza rebela mo counselor.
And the modula situlo o warona o.
And this a chairperson of us.
Because harita rich oradi meeting, riki sa di kitiwa asa chava because of rona, we are his messengers, we are people who are working close to him. We know what is happening in the entire world or in the entire community.
All right, Papa, okay, but if we are represented, or you are representing of them, we should also assist them in this. Baba, okay, but if we are represented, or you are representing of them, we should also assist them in this bill. The one that we have come from, just indicate on this one of ya bandwana, on how as you, a person who are a representative and a world committee member, on assisting about this bill.
My, 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 my concern is based on what you said earlier, madam speaker, me manva.
Yes, madam chair, yes.
Oh, madam chair. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my honorable, honorable eh madam chair.
Kikibua jalo kahona ke tshwenzekese ono osotoa eh la eh madam chairman va na.
Obule, obule akasugha, bosugha de, yankatalosa chora, eh ready world committee kamolau to extend the hope being world committee members. We are being overlooked by our councillors and we are the people who are working close with the community.
Kajalo kahona rona ya karunjana ra maloko a di world committee, meja karile rakopi a jana, sese retsya fano fa ke chora, returi suama, chomere tshwanzo chora ebile rona, ridrisana umochole bo.
Yeah, 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 summarize, Baba.
Kafelele.
Yeah, about sugar dead, no, but my friend, we've heard that we don't want them.
Okay, so now, har choralile passele ko, nchoko, ko, 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 social development, badi fadi councillora, baba tama kachonba kofa bato baba.
So if there are parcels at social development, they take them, they give them to the councillors, and the councillors give them to whoever they want.
And then you'll find that now that the kind of the problem ya, 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 child bill eh eh tshwanzere amende.
Oboba tchoka wela chora fano fa, but tata joag molau kaka wa wabana, or tshwanzo chora road tabolo le.
Haru chono kui ala ina lo na because now, malapa asokolan abana.
We are not be able to align ourselves with it because the families of the children, that is the struggling families where the children are to be found.
Are being overlooked by the councillors and then forgetting that the community, ye, rona world committees, ke ono chona kutuza bana ba, we know those children and we can.
Baba, Baba, as a world committee, as a world committee member, we've got a responsibility to, to protect those that are undermined by the councillors.
Our words are not heard by the councillor, that is should be known.
You must name and shame those councillors so that we deal with them, umayu zume kona, not now.
Oh, thank you very much.
Write down those councillors that are undermining people that are struggling and suffering. The mayor was here, we told her that we will give her submission, so, because we can't be, we can be sued. Yeah, we, we can be sued if we, we name and shame people in the public meetings.
I'm not going to mention, but now.
Write down, Baba.
Okay, nekiri akoro, I must write them down, they're not, if sometimes they're not even, we are not taking into consideration where we direct our, our, our crisis or our problems and so on.
Okay, thank you very much, Baba, thanks will take into. It's fine, it's fine, Baba, and also they are cautioning me and, and reprimanding the, we may that we must refer you also to the chief whip. And also, it's fine because you were in the public hearings today, you can submit and to the chief whip, thank you very much. Are you section seventy two and section where aggekebas? Municipal act. Okay, thank you very much, Baba, you, we are not going to allow what has happened and done by data, no, no, no ways. I might laugh, I might scream, I might jump over the table, but there are things that I'm not going to allow. Kaloko, we are two hundred and fifty here, so each and everyone must have a bite, a bite and bite. And Baba, you haven't said that whether you support the bill or not.
No, the things that are determined that will be given, they must be given, I cannot say that now.
Okay.
I support the bill and if I attend that now, I have created myself of the program.
Alright, Baba, okay, you'll get us even outside so as to be able to empty eh whatever that you want to empty. Sure, hmm, okay, thank, thank, madam chair.
Reko pa chora falitla kubua le seke la, zana ko etele kuchwana le, Baba kamo, ke ko pa choralene kaburipana, chora rechone ku fetaka.
Eh kozuwa choro.
Greetings, everyone.
Badama do make is Africa.
Well, would like to spread our greetings.
I don't know, eh madam chair, am I protected? Because I don't like the way eh eh, this is a eh eh civil society member, and some ekuto ahaa hway.
I don't know.
Now you have to allow eh people.
I don't know chair if I'm protected.
Banse, my kutu abon, eh akroya kadi lo seba di bo na, mo committee ebalo amore.
Please speak, will you have any?
Eh eh eh, mamela Baba. We are going to allow everyone to have a bite.
Oh, thank you.
But when you over limit yourself, I'm going to cut you.
Thank you.
And we request the mic to be switched off, so we have at least to have a time limit to everyone, thank you Baba, over to you.
Ke na hanachora eh batu bo teba reba biditeng, keba regina ya, ya kei kei. So, keko pa chora, retsya ele koya kadi tshyaelo, zeri tili ngazo na because, haru bua kadi wote, there are so many eh wote that are here, we will open for the wote now. So, haru diren chora rebueng koya ka mu khao, documente buangatela, house has supported, house support. So ne kibua chora, sedi builo ndi builo mara, are based eh mosere sibi lady to move, kiale wo.
Okay, chair, thank you.
Okay, you, you can continue.
Eh chair, kali naki Martin.
My name is Martin.
Kam, kasifani kumohashwa.
My surname is Mukashwa, chair.
I'm a civil society district leadership.
I am a civil society district leadership.
Under main sector.
Kamu tlasika main sector.
Eh bua ya ka, eka, tipanya tata lese buise, sesfeza kubua.
My speech will be actually about the inconcern to the previous speaker.
But now because of ubua, I'm going to make it short.
But as you say, chair, angoya kitileku, bua kaburipan.
As a civil society, we have nineteen sectors.
As a civil society eh renali, di sector di li nineteen.
And then one of them, inali sharena sector, sharena sector is part of the nineteen sectors.
Eh we yazona inali sector ya bana.
Now, S organization, eh le keso kohio ne, eh le NPO ekzon kohio ne.
S N eh organization of.
NPO.
Of NPO, the one that I'm from.
We are dealing with office and verbal children.
Eh we are dealing with eh children.
Now, what I'm saying chora eh, the social worker, at some point, you could do whatin.
Eh what I want to say is about eh, my, my, my point is about social workers eh at the wards.
Ha di diri mokoli NPO.
They do not work together with the NPOs.
And then you have a list, the renali database here, office and verbal children.
We have list and we have database of eh children.
We, riziko, di tchoko di linti.
We know where problems are.
Komatapa alinti abana.
Where difficulties are concerning children.
But now the problem is because of re, re, ready volunteer.
But then the problem is that because we are volunteers.
We were struggling with, sometimes we were struggling with the resources.
We are struggling with resources.
Now, each awo tchoko choralile eh case ya wana.
It pains me when it, it's about children.
Ke kogote la busiu, or ke fonu la busiu.
When someone knocks on my door at night, or when I receive a call at night.
Pakela ke zo, ha, ke kriya eh time.
When I receive an eh time in the morning when I wake up.
Ha ke fonu la social worker, eh le kore, eberekoko eh riye, eki lunko chora, or kuba tata nganlunkoti.
When I call the social worker, the one that works on, on the ward that I'm on.
Ke kibala chora, social worker has a transport.
And I will get told that the social worker does not have transport.
Now, as a civil society, I'm saying chora, rekopa chora, ma fapa atwana labor, social development eh.
As a civil society, I'd like to say eh departments as social development.
Labor home affairs.
And the home affairs ones.
Because of renale bana basa tene schoolo.
Because we have children who do not go to school.
Because of habana di pa, the ID habana, I mean the birth certificates.
And because they don't have birth certificates.
Because of batelabon habana the IDs.
And their parents do not have IDs.
Now, we went to work hand in hand with those two departments.
Reko pa khudi risanamocholi ma fapa ama bedi aw.
So that re, le tarabo le ya chora, ra tusa wa na bao ya.
So that we have, we can have resolutions on how to help the children.
Because I become worried because of bo ne ba Baba vulnerable.
Because eh I become worried about the vulnerable children.
Ke bo ne ba mostly bala chora ba abuse wa ke foreigners.
They get abused by the foreigners.
Oh, bo ne ba abuse ambo my friend, like speaker assist, sesfeza kubua se bui.
Oh, oh, they get abused by eh my friends, like the previous speakers eh have outlined.
So, as I'm saying, I'm the, I'm from the civil society eh forum.
Jakaki tamo civil society forum.
Reko pa, redi saramo kholi ma fapa aw, aw tere eh le kore, eh kama ya le koberka kaba.
Can we please partnership with all those departments that eh work with children?
Eh so, ke na hanake, ke na lipu etele le, but because of kisamad, madam chair, thangkaoli.
I actually had a long speech that I wanted to outline today, but I'm afraid that madam speaker is gonna cut me.
Let me pause here.
I'll pause here today.
Yeah, thank you eh, oh, you can submit what you wanted to say.
Oka, kisa, eh se mosos kwa dealing, osi.
As I have said, yeah, as I have said, thank you very much, you were brief and precise. Oh, we are supportive bill of for Kanjan, do you support the bill or not? Thank you very much.
Duma la.
Eh greetings.
Eh, my heart is bleeding.
Eh pelo ya ka erotama di.
To see a leadership here.
Chobona batele dipile fano.
I wanted to greet him by the hands, by the virtue that we are within the level of COVID nineteen.
Ke nekebata chora kasiya, takili dumedi za, mekan tya chora mo eh eh COVID nineteen.
So eh, can not sepa moswe, a very, very vibrant, active agency in what for.
Sepa moswe u, ilen le ANC, ilen le kha kha vesa ntaa.
So, I'm going to address only three issues.
Kahona kebata kubua kama tata amara rufela.
That parliament must look at me.
Chora parlamente intibe.
Because I'm a vulnerable individual bleeding inside.
Kahona lena ke mutyo na lema tata asen kana kasepe pelo yame, erotama di kamuti.
So one.
Yancha.
When you're talking about the kids.
Haru bua kaba na.
Rea kudi kolo.
Going to the schools.
You go to Sasa.
Rea ko Sasa.
And ask for uniform.
Vika obota, o, oka, okopa uniformo.
By the virtue that we are blacks. By the virtue that we are blacks.
Galo kan tafale chora olumo mutomunso.
Uniform ya bana barona etla after five years.
Eh the uniform, the uniforms for.
The vulnerability of the children.
Only come after five years and the vulnerability ya bana barona.
Batama kaka futu akoskolo sabo pe.
They actually go to school without shoes on their feet.
And then some of the teachers here.
Me ba, ba rudaba na bawe.
How long wa na ore, ge slow learner? Can a parliament define the word slow, what is a slow learner?
So eh eh, when you say to them that your child is a slow learner, can the parliament actually give us a definition of what is a slow learner?
Because of that thing ya bo slow learner, if ever wa na ilislow learner oli teacher.
Eh kantaya soloso sabo slow learner, hai lo chora wa na, ge slow learner uedna, umurudaba na.
Oboma ra ore, then must go.
Then you say to the child, then you must go home.
And then the third thing. Eh, the way politiki ele eh deep playang, eh role in Makwasi Hills is very disturbing us.
Eh chora tshwanya to, ta choba na katsela eh di politiki di na lesa beka ting, mo Makwasi Hills.
Because you check in town around ten o'clock.
Kahona ukhela moto ropo moi kana ngaa ura ya butene.
Twelve years children.
Bana badi guacha dile twelveo.
In feminine cafe, there is a pub there.
Ba le mo lefelo la koto kome la kaba na, ibile bo lefelo le, chora le pub.
They are selling bodies.
Eh ba rikisa basima.
So, by the virtue that politically inclined.
Kanti ya bo politiki jore bo bo na.
Our coordinators in terms of EPWPs and any programs.
Eh ba, okamidi bana ba di EPWPs, EPWCs.
They are using these programs in a wrong way by the virtue that.
Batza misale dado lelo leka, tse la esasia ma, milebaga ilo chora.
Lebaga ilo chora, bana hanachora, when you are making a door to door.
Eh the reason being that, bana hanachora, howtsama ya, kantulinto.
You can't see a needy person, chora animo programming, eh, it's a program of a government.
Kaoka kiwa ba tla chora mutyo le, mo choki, atse ngomole na ne wale, ne kahona le, kohio le sofela, batu babus.
Yeah, so today.
Ke kajalo kumpino ja.
Next week.
Mobeki nyeta.
I'm going to court.
Kiya kota.
Ke boza, skill development, someone.
Eh eh eh, amanale.
Osho taka kanga ba, na baba nyan, ba ba twa moskolo, abaktsani sa di contracta, busiu ku, kohaha, anachana he owns a skill development, because skill development is to develop youth.
It is about eh someone who has actually taken young children, young people, and actually sign, making them sign a contract in relation to skills development, because he believes and thinks that he can be able to develop those skills of his young ones. Ne kumpino?
We have a youth center here.
So renali eh tikati koiaba, shafano fa.
A very useless center that I most went to Rustenbeck and asked that why parliament came here, why is in a NYTA to develop us here.
So hai na musola, chora kelele, moile chora ki leka, ya koras.
It's a.
Kika tanyan hapuso esate fano fa.
It's a party agent, it's a party agent, there is a parties there, if you want to eh eh make a baby shower, you can go to eh 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 that, that youth center.
So hai lo chora, koba tla khuda tere tere tshwana li di baby shower, khosa party ya mufita moko, tshwanzo chora, ya kohio na, sentara enue.
So, it is very imperative that parliament must not come to us when you're going to the voter, when you're going to the elections.
Kajalo haru ba tla chora parlamente ete mo choro, na tla kubua lo na ha, eresese rejano, rea konakonya di tchopo.
On behalf of that, I submit comrade leadership here that, it's a sepa moswe, I amend this bill.
Kajalo ke, leka, kui la fano chora molakaka, kaka wa ono o tshwanzo chora, o tabolo le.
Thank you very pleased, I wish quarter is a banja, cha robotaka di learner ship chora, bana ba tshwana chora roba na for the learner ship.
Eh ke ya lebo ha, ibile ke, sole fela chora, kota sakala, kita inkatrola, inkatrola la chora bana, eh haba chono kuvichela la di learner ship.
Thank you very pleased.
Kiale boha.
Thank you, thank you, Baba.
Ah, my name is Sandile Chabalaka.
Na, lilalaka ke Sandile Chabalaka?
Chabalaka.
Chabalaka?
Ah, I'm a member of National Professional Teachers Union.
Ke na ilo kola National Professional Teachers Union?
It's a, I'm from Tlaxo.
Kitoa ko Tlaxo.
But I'm a provincial vice chairperson of the union.
Meki mutusa modula situlo, wa mo profesi yate.
I'll first say I'll support the bill.
Ke kasi bo la fano fa kahu kubua chora ki amo kela, molau kaka wa waro.
With the provision that there are amendments that should be made on the bill.
Fa ilo chora, kota na di di tabolo lo, zeri kadi ruang, omolau kaka wa wango.
The first one, I'll first speak about the ECD.
San kaka bata kubua fano fa kadi ECDs.
And the link to education department.
Le kola kana katso na lele fapa la tuto.
Eh learners with physical challenges.
Bana baba na ngale, eh bohola, mommeling.
They are not accommodated in basic education.
Haba amo keli, mo ma fa, mo, mo di karo leza tuto motelo.
And according to the bill, they must be accepted at ECD.
Me koya kama la kaka, kaba tshwanzo chora ba amo kela motenka di ECD.
And in that process, it says to me that they must proceed to no, to inclusive education.
Mesewo sentase, re koshwanzo chora, then, bazolepe le, chora lebo ne ba akari di yo, kochi lele le baba, mo, mo, kota tuto.
And that will promote the issue of that learners with not learning disability, but physically challenged.
Mesewo seta besa, amana tata le, ising bana ba ilen chora eh, habana, bana leba tata ba, ba tata joa kopalwa, ke kui tuta, me etana baba amana le, chora ki baba na le bohola mommeling.
And the community will start to accept.
Me bata simola ba amo keli. Bata ba, ba, amaloko asa taba, bata simola amo kela bao, na bao baba na le bohola mommeling.
If they attend normal schools.
Fa ilo chora ba tse ngwa, mo di kolo, zeri tchwa leki le fe la.
And therefore it will require funding.
Mesewo seta taka madi.
And then the second point.
Men taya bo beri?
Eh the rampage of teenage pregnancy.
Eh kohola, ha huima, ha basha.
And as a, as a, as a teacher, it's affecting. And as an, as a, as a teacher, it's affecting the broader prospects of future learners. Currently, the state says forty-four thousand learners. Between the age of ten and fourteen. During the lockdown, they had children. And they drop out of school. And that has affected the whole school system. And then those were the age forty, fifteen to eighteen. They were about four hundred thousand. Children's marriages. It is included in the act. Therefore, I, I accept that children should not be married. As the previous speaker spoken about it. Marriage of conveniency. And then that, the cost that is childhooded families. Therefore, I'll request that. The childhooded families should be incorporated to adoption or family units. The last one and school safety. Uh, protection of our school properties. You can invest in properties. And then been destroyed after few, few months. The resources that our schools are stolen. And children who are not protected at school. Teachers are facing huge challenges where they are challenged to protect the kids and these people come with weapons. Therefore, say school safety is of paramount importance. I accept the bill.
Thank you, thank you, Sandy. Are you going to clap for all other people that are speaking? Over to you, Wap.
Uh, dumelambahay.
Greetings, everyone.
Uh, Obuanfa, ki, Mr. Jerisibute.
Uh, the one who is speaking here today is Mr. Jerisibute.
Uh, ki, demo Civil Society Forum Chairperson.
I'm the chairperson on the Civil Society Forum.
And I'm also the chairperson here, people living with HIV and AIDS in Dr. KK and provincial member.
I'm also the chairperson of. Oh, HIV and AIDS member.
Uh, Chairperson, before I get to the moment, you have been here.
I'm actually jealous when I see that it's actually not happening and it's done by the parliament. I'm very disappointed, but I'll forgive you from today. Uh, when I'm pointing at that candle when it's there. It hurts me. When I see the, 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 its rule not being followed. Because many people. Have passed away. And left their children. Whom today? Whom today are being abused sexually, so. So Chairperson would like to ask that this candle. And we must respect the candle and follow the rule of the candle. Because on, on this important day. Because on this day and age, we're actually under the COVID nineteen pandemic. Which today, uh, some of us who actually live under HIV and AIDS. Who, who live with HIV and AIDS. And if I see that the rules are actually not being followed, uh, in regards of people who are living with HIV. I will not respect and I'm very angry, but then I'll, I'll try and bow myself. Can we please light the candle? Someone who has the match, the matchbox.
All right, Papa, you know what? You have come in. Let me explain this thing of the candle. We asked ourselves, what, what is it for? Because you never came to the chairperson or any other member that is seated here and explained what there is this candle. I'm angry with you, me too. I'm just angry with you not to inform us. We know the candle sometimes when it's here, it means something. But we told ourselves, it's, it's another area. Maybe it's something else that we don't know. You still have to explain about it. But we cannot, as members of parliament, not respect people that are living with HIV, even those that have passed away. We honor them, them a lot. Uh, well, you are right. We are faced with the COVID now and then the, the, the issue of the HIV. Sometimes it has been overtaken by this COVID, which we don't know. At least we know about HIV AIDS and we know it's terrible and we know at least how can we try and. So it's good that you have came and also tell us about this candle and we can give you the permission to light the candle. And unfortunately, the mayor, maybe she was going to give us the update or briefing about the candle, but she never because she was rushing for somewhere. So Papa, we respect each and everyone who lives in South Africa and whoever is having whatever culture that she is having or he is having. You can come Papa and light on the candle. I don't know whether there is something that needs to happen before you light the candle and after you have lit, lit the candle. So we'll hear from you after, not now. For now, are you supporting the bill or not? Thank you very much. Is the end. You have forgotten to clap the hands. Clap the hands as much. All right. Seemingly there are no other hands, eh? Okay, there is one at the back. And there is another one here in front. Can you come closer to the mic? Come closer to the mic. Those are the two hands that I see and I hope that those will be the last hand and then we can be able to. Ma, you are the third one. No ma, okay, the fourth one. See, so Fumana, the answers, we have to get the answers on all what we have raised.
Uh, Bajol.
Uh, everybody. I, I say that I really am very jealous. When I saw it here, I thought there was someone who have been selected to come and light it. But then I just saw the chairperson opening the proceedings and then we went on with the program. I have forgiven you, Chairperson.
Uh, Bajay.
Everybody. Uh, HIV AIDS is now in the open. We can't hide it. Uh, because a lot of people are afraid to speak about their status. That is why in this, the states of Dr. K. Kahunda, HIV status are still very, very high. And this is because of denial. Because people actually, uh, are hiding it, the fact that they are hiding the fact that they are living with it. And today people are socializing a lot in the different parties and they actually end up getting drunk from alcohol. Of that drinking. Now, it is related to sexual intimacies. And then this actually means unprotected sex. And for that reason, the states are rising very high. I want to appeal to you, whoever of you who maybe. If you haven't actually revealed your status. I am appealing to you. Go to the clinic so that we, we, we can actually help you. Because you are afraid to say it in your family that you have HIV. And then you are hiding yourself when you take your medicine. When you drink, when you take your tablets behind the corner. Especially you women are hiding them from their men. I'm asking you today to stand up and tell him. And then why don't you go to the test? And say, when you see these tablets, just know that I'm HIV positive. So I have lived with HIV positive for forty-four years. I'm still very strong. I'm very strong. So be like me. There is nothing that actually bothers me about this. I'm very serious. So this candle that I'm now going to light. I am lighting it for, for those who actually have left us. Uh, and for the people who were brutally killed because of HIV AIDS. Uh, the name of that person is Dududamini. If you remember him very well. She was parroted with stones when she was explaining, explaining to the people about HIV AIDS. And I know that I'm doing this and my God will actually protect me. Thank you very much. Can you all rise? And then also I want to appeal to you. Uh, the former Minister of Health. Uh, Mr. Mutualidi, he knows me everywhere. When we were at the stadium in. On the, on the HIV day. They encouraged me to encourage others to go for the HIV test and that's exactly what I did. And after we had been able to gather the people to go for their tests. Then I turned around. And then I told the officials as well to go and test so that they can see you. It wasn't only for the members of the society, but also you, the officials must go for your tests and they must see you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Papa. Uh. Yes, we are. Honorable members who are leaders of the society. See, see, we were elected by people, meaning that by you. You raised your hand and you said so. This must go to the parliament and represent us. There is no way that we cannot respect things that are coming from the communities. We are here in front of you because of. Papa, you have touched us. But, uh, I'm not sure, but there are still speakers. I thought you'll do this after this. We all know that. Or if, like Udada has said, when Zekanchalo, why you dirty treatment, at least over fresh like Udada is. If I can say. And then that COVID, yeah, overtaker in a way that we are, we were not aware in HIV and AIDS. It's something that we don't know. If I was angry totally, uh, uh, COVID, someone else next to you or any of your family who has managed to get it. Let's respect all these diseases and all these viruses and the deltas because this one is called delta now. Same applies as we do respect, uh, uh, the HIV. Therefore, encouraging us to go and test. Yes, yeah, yeah, at all times as honorable members. We lead by example. Okay, thank you very much. Can we give over to the hands? How many are they? One, two, three, four. Okay, you are the fifth one.
Uh, greetings, everyone. Uh, I want to say greetings to honorable ladies there in the front. Today we are going to speak about children. So I think your coming is very pleasant. Uh, my name is Joyce Motsaje, honorable members.
From Wotse.
So I'm from Wotse.
Uh, I'm working as CBP. CBP.
CBP.
Community based planner.
You are a community based planner. So I, I work in Jobetan. We have lots of problems about children in Jobetan. Since we are coming to speak about children, I'm just going to straight, to go straight into the point related to the children. I'm not going to deviate and speak about other things. As I work with children in the community. As I work with children in the community. We've got lots of children. Who, right now. Some of them have actually lost their parents in death. And have been trying to really make some birth certificates for them. Some of them actually, their parents passed on without them, they themselves having birth certificates or IDs.
So sometimes.
So as field worker, sometimes we really don't know how to solve the problems. Because even the very departments whom we go to to seek for help are not able to give us the relevant help as to how can we actually handle the problems related to these children. And now the problem that crops up then will be that some children will not be able to attend school. Some of the children are in grade twelve. They are not even able to finish their grade twelve because they don't have birth certificates. And then you'll find that there's not even a single person in the family who can help these ones to have their birth certificates. And then I'm saying this because there is this child who often keeps coming to me to come find out if there's any progress because he really wanted me to help him so that he can be able to finish his grade twelve. Sometimes we try to work hard to help these children. And then as we go forward, then we ourselves are not able to obtain the help we need. And every time, it is always been proclaimed that children do have their right for education. So which means that if this child doesn't have someone to help with a birth certificate. So then some, we end up not knowing what to do because now the child doesn't have their birth certificate to progress. They won't be able to finish their grade twelve. And then it has also been said that they can actually make some, a letter, some sort of a letter for them so that they can be able to continue and finish their grade twelve, but these things are not happening. So if there is no anybody from their family who have been able to help them, we can't help them, then we are stuck. So thank you very much, that's the help that I was seeking for because we've got lots of problems with children. Sometimes we find that a parent has got some three children, they don't have birth certificates. The parent himself or herself doesn't have one either. So we are seeking the department, we're asking the department please to help us in that regard. And then I do accept, support the bill.
Greetings everyone. I'd like to greet our honorable, honorable members. My name is Betimakamu. I'm from Arabo King School. I'm the departmental head on the school. I'm also the member of Q L T C. I'm also the coordinator of S T. I'm also a member of N S L P. I'm also a teacher. Here today, I'll point out some few problems that we experience at schools. The first one is going to be feeding scheme. With feeding scheme, children do receive feeding schemes at school. We thank you about that, we thank you about the feeding schemes. Because the department is the one who offered. But that is not enough. Because banana ba. Because these kids. When they go home now after school. We don't know the situation. We do not know the situation at home. Of their home. Whether both parents are waking. Or the child is a familiarated somebody. Or the child is actually the one who's taking care of other children at home. It's a problem that we have to ask ourselves. So in schools, we also have orphaned children. Those children are vulnerable. Who actually depend on the grant of the grandparents. Or their foster care grant. So my request here. We are asking the department to actually take statistics of, of these kids in our schools, of orphans in our schools. Baba run me lady food parcels. Send them food parcels. So that when they go home. They'll have something to eat. You'll find that they are last meal, is actually the meal that they ate at school. We're asking ourselves, what is gonna be next? There's a problem that we encounter with children, find that they go to dumping sites to actually seek for food there. We're also pleading to you to also look at that and provide for not only feeding schemes, but also food parcels that they will take home. My second point, it has to be with the undocumented learners. Knowing that DKK is actually a place of mines. Many parents are actually foreigners. When they get to South Africa, they give birth to children. Now, we encountering problems of children without birth certificate. But they were born in South Africa. So they do not receive benefits that they're supposed to, to actually receive as children who were born in South Africa. They do not receive foster care grants. And many other things they do not receive. But I would like to say, please also take a look at that so that we can help these kids. They must not end up without a useless certificate they cannot use. Interventionary Home Affairs. They are too expensive. We are asking, we are asking the Home Affairs to also help where they can with, in regards of these parents because they are undocumented, they don't have documents. So lastly, Kia COVID and Social Departments. The last one, it has to do with COVID and Social Departments. Many parents, many children have lost their parents due to COVID nineteen. As educators, we cannot help them. They need psychological support. Because now, when the child now is actually an orphan. At primary level. You won't expect that child to actually produce good marks. Now, if we can have social workers who actually visit school sites. We do not have. Schools here don't have social workers assigned. So, but as the CSTL. Support and learning and teaching. It says that each and every school has to have a police officer. It has to have a social worker. But we don't have. We do not know if. We do not know if this is shortage or they just don't have the stability to actually visit our schools to see the situation we have there. Also with the, also with the COVID problem, you'll find that we only have one person assigned to assist in a whole school, only one person. In seventeen schools. In seventeen schools. Tabaya COVID is something that is not going to vanish anytime soon. We actually also asking that the Department of Health to visit our schools, to actually come and outline the problem of COVID nineteen because it's actually a huge problem that we are experiencing. I'm also dying, I'm actually about to finish. So. These were the things that I actually needed to outline and I support the bill. Greetings everyone. I'm Lala from Makwasi. Just to summarize everything that I'm going to speak about, I have five groups of children. We have the one who are disabled. And the street kids. Actually, the ones who are disabled, they pain us because they don't have schools. They stay with their parents and their parents are actually single parents. They need training. About the street kids, they actually, some of them have parents, but it's a life that they chose for themselves. We have children who actually slow learners at schools. Those children, the teachers are impatient with them. We have children from other countries, but who were born in other countries, but actually they are South Africans. But only because the card, the clinical card for the child does not have a stamp of a South African from where they were born. It's actually difficult and it's a problem for them because now they cannot have birth certificate. Find that their parents, they run around to try and receive help for them, but they can't. I ask our honorable members today. You, there's a bill that you've put in front of us today. Which is very difficult and it wants us to gather together as parents. Please don't stop here today. And it's very painful as a parent. If you can just come to Makwasi. There are many children who, you'll be painful just to watch them. We leave our children to be, to be cared with our parents when we go to work. We do not support these kids. Because in our minds, we think that the foster care grant is theirs and it's supposed to take care of them. No, but the school issue, they don't have school uniform. When you visit their home, you find that where they sleep, it's actually, it's problematic, it's a problem. Please, the bill that you put in front of us today. Don't, don't stop here. Come back. Come back and let us know, give us feedback on what we've outlined. What I ask you now. We ask you to come back as you started in Volmaran Start. You can also go to Makwasi to also visit there. Thank you. I support the bill. Greetings everyone. Our leaders. And everyone who is here today. Today is a day where we outline problems of children. And actually, the challenges of children, it's actually a huge point that we're dealing with. Now that we have all the stakeholders present. But I see there's one stakeholder that is missing today. People with disability because Renali High School, yeah, the sign language people, they are not here. The one who is about children with disability because we have high schools about that and, but we do not see a representative, the representative here. Others are from a deaf school, they are present. They are not here. Oh, they are not here, they are not here, they didn't come. Because like it's horrible, people with disability, they are saying nothing about us. I would like to say eh in future, please look at these issues. Because eh people who are living with disability, they eh we they actually not consider considering us.
Because especially.
Eh eh children living with disability are encountering a lot of problems, especially in the ECDs. Because you 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 register a child in your ECD eh somewhere eh a child who is who who signs, who's a sign la- language eh person. Find that the parent oh as well cannot sign, does not know how to sign.
And including leave the parents because. How am I going to communicate with eh my mother or the people eh in my family?
We are asking that eh we must be provided with trainings in our ECDs, especially for the learners. So that they can know how to sign and also for their parents now, so that it can be eh easy for them to express themselves at home with their parents as well. If you take a child to Rustenbeck eh eh as young as they are, they still need care of their parents and you separate them eh with their parents. And they are the very same children in our commu- communities who are actually sexually abused and nothing is said about that. Another thing that is very problem problematic is. Is the grade R children from the schools. I do not see safety for these children because now after school when they go home, who 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 who's there for them to to care for them? There's no one, even on the road when they're going home. Eh I I think there's a problem with that because they they encounter problems. Also not about only who's gonna care for them, also about food. Find that their parents, they go to work, they knock off late, who's gonna eh actually care for these children? Another problem is about children, find that the eh we we as parents, we actually eh give our 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 parents, their grandparents. To actually care for them, of which is a problem. Yes, grandmothers can take a good care of children, but they need help because things have changed. Find that eh they're living with an uncle at home, the uncle will now abuse or harass the children. And the grandmother will not be able to see because they are old and no one is helping them. We are asking the Department of eh eh. Social Development or Education.
Who who would you work at child abuse? Yes, they know, but.
To provide like a program for all the people who care for children. So that they can they can be taught on how to to care for children in regards of eh the abuse.
And lastly, ID, birth certificates.
Um also the big problems that we are experiencing is ID documents and birth certificates. We actually risk in our ECDs, we risk, we register these children without any documents, just only with the clinic card.
Especially le ba na ba eh special needs. Because the white paper.
Please go and, please go, please go and and look at this problem because now eh children are encountering problems.
Especially eh children with special needs.
Especially eh children with eh eh disabled children.
Access for these children.
And we are asking eh for our ECDs to be provided with facilities so that we can help these children. Thank you. I support the bill.
Greetings, honorable members. I want to say a greeting to leaders here before us. And the house at large. So I don't have that much to say. I only want to talk about the parliament. In a certain year gone by, I just can't remember which year it was. I I had some papers at home. So there is this document, I seem to remember it said children in parliament. It was very helpful, but it was not taken forward. I was in a member of that particular committee and it was from different wards. We were supposed to go and report at the social de- development department as to what is actually taking place in our ward. To report about what actually happens about the children. And then we were even actually allowed and given forms to walk from door to door. And then those were supposed to have already been filled up. But I really don't know what happened to the whole of that process. But I kept on going to the office eh related to that. And then I do have some papers here, I have done my work with that regard at the time. And then it was very helpful because it allowed you to know exactly the challenges faced by children. Because at that time, what was discussed was the fact that eh children were roaming the streets. Yes, and they were very visible to our eyes. That is why at the end, we decided to open. The ECD so that we could gather them from the streets. And then after removing them from the streets. Then among them, they were the disabled ones. At that time, we would actually reject them. But now, as we continued attending different workshops and being taught about children. We then were allowed and told to accept and absorb those children into the ECD. And then we ended up doing exactly that. But then our problem. Was that we didn't have resources to actually help those such like children. They they can come into the ECD, no problem. But the ECD doesn't have enough money. There wasn't even special money as to how to help the disabled ones. In need of the resources at that time. Because we find that one needs this, one needs the other. So now we are very happy today. That we have come here to speak about what we need. And maybe in the days that lie ahead, we'll be able to have everything that we need. So when you open an ECD or when you gather the children from the streets. There is a very, there is a problem at the municipality because we are not able to get the site, you will struggle to find one. You will really struggle. And then when you start teaching the children. When when they leave school. Then you will find that maybe some of them will start engaging in some plays, games that could actually make them go astray somehow. And there are no parks. Where they could eh eh please go into the parks and spend the day playing there. And then at that time, we'll be having as ECDs closed because people will actually break into our C E C Ds. So that the children know that at a certain time, the park is where I'm going to play. And then the parent might actually even go along with them or maybe go to pick them up from the park. So these children need protection. So when we finish eh at the end, we find that there are some who cannot actually eh obtain grants. And some don't attend school. I I have them because I still even had them by the time when I was a member of the children in parliament. There is this one who kept growing right now, she's seven years of age. She doesn't have a grade R, she doesn't actually eh have the know the dog into the school. I absorbed this child just because she's a little older now, just so that I can protect. And then I tried to actually find a space for this child at the school and then he says to me, if you don't have the required documents and particulars. Then don't even bother bringing the child here. And the problem is that they cannot eh be able to register the children because the parent doesn't have an ID. And then the mother of, the the grandmother doesn't want to actually make the ID for the mother. Then when we go to try and find the ID of a parent. And then and then the the ID is actually with. And and then it is with the loan sharks and the loan sharks, the loan shark people don't want to give back the ID to the mother. So now we were only able to obtain these in this very year. Now, when we go to the department to actually eh that have got to do with the issue of the IDs. They interviewed us. So now they were supposed to do an interview between the mother and the child. Now, actually, there is no problem there, but actually, now, this is a particular problem. Should you actually undergo an interview at the. At the Home Affairs, this will drag for years. And then the years go past and then the child is growing very fast. And then he doesn't even attend the school. How is it going to? How is it going to be like in these days, maybe up to the year twenty twenty six? Who hasn't gone through the school, maybe even having a family. Thank you very much for your presence, honorable members. And and we are very thankful that you came with things that you have been able to observe. Because from the higher ground as it were, you are you 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 are able to see things down below. There are so many struggles and challenges around here and they are all related to children. Children need food. Because the mother doesn't have an ID to actually apply for a grant for these children. The the parent will keep on asking endlessly. And then it's very, very painful when they ask for help from you and then at that time, you just don't have anything, any water to help with. Now, how, well, how should actually met us continue with this particular child? It's very, very painful. Now, some of them are giving themselves over to this older man because she has got no income, no ID, nothing. And dropped out out of the school, didn't do grade twelve because no ID. And you can see sometimes that it's a very smart child who could even be the future president. But because of the ID which was not able to be obtained. Because of those long unnecessary interviews, the child actually has missed the opportunity. Now, can we ask you to go to the Home Affairs, please? Municipality for us to have signs if we need them, thank you.
You are the last one.
Eh my name is eh Mohale Matose. Representing the South African Democratic Teachers Union. As I do, we are going to make four points in this regard. The first one. The first one has to do with the right of the father. Women are weaponizing their children. In a sense that you get an unemployed father. Being told by an unemployed mother. That they cannot see their child because the father cannot eh provide anything for their child. Whereas both of them are unemployed. Now, the right of fathers also needs to be emphasized. Because even if they are not unemployed, their role in the in the life of the child is as important as the role of the mother. Yes, the second point is of school social workers. Many problems in the schools that we are facing, they need social workers. However. Our social workers service too many schools. To an extent that even if you make a case now. A child has been affected in one way or another. It will take three months, the whole term would end without a social worker coming. The effect of that is that it is making teachers become social workers. Whereas that is not our role, our role is to teach. The third issue is the one of ECD. They move from social development to DBE, must be done as fast as possible. However, it is also not a panacea to the problems of ECD. Because ECDs do not have resources, even if they move to education, they'll still not have resources. And the ladies who are here are correct, to just have a site for an ECD, the municipality takes you from pillar to post. Just to have a site for the ECD, which is something that an intervention must be made. Then ECD should also become compulsory.
There shouldn't be any child at, at home who is not being grafted into the ECD.
The other thing is that we must also become pragmatic. The ECD fees must also be scrapped away. You get a, a, a child who has an unemployed mother who earns the four fifty grand for the child. But the ECD centers will want two hundred each and every month. When you take away two hundred from four fifty, they are left with two fifty. What will they eat for the rest of the month? So therefore, it's not only important that they must be compulsory, but they must also become free so that every child can go to an ECD center. As teachers, the side effect of a child that has not attended ECD is that. The child is not cognitively developed. To an extent that some children, they go to grade R for the first time in a school. They are not even used to sitting in one place for a very long time on a chair. So therefore, many of these kids end up struggling throughout grade R to grade one because they are adapting instead of learning at that time. So this backlog of cognitive development. Has a direct impact on the statistics that only half of the learners that start grade R or one make it to mid-three. This is why this thing happens because these kids did not go to an ECD center to develop the cognitive skills at the beginning. The last point is this. The Act is okay on child marriages. However, there is an element that is missing out in semi-oral areas as well as in, in the urban area. It is not child marriage that affects us here. It is these unmarried poor girl children that become housewives. You find that a child, especially girl children, as young as grade seven, they are living with men and they are the girlfriends of these men, which is also not correct. So the Act must not only say child marriage, it should also include statutory rape and also include relationships where adults will be having relations with children that are younger than eighteen or even sixteen years. Statutory rape. Now. We have to do this to save poor girl children. Because sometimes even as teachers, when we complain to their mothers, their mother would give us a very simple answer. The answer would just be that this man is the one supporting us in the household. What can we do? So that is the only point that I wanted to make to say, let us not only call it child marriages Act, but also relationships with minors.
I support the bill of authority. Can we give over to social development?
Good morning, honorable members. Our colleagues and officials who are here. Even our community members. Yes. Um, thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Timen Kweena. I'm responsible for child protection in the province. I would like to start with an issue. It's a burning issue, I think, in this region, the issue of undocumented, um, children. It is not only a problem of community members. It also affects social workers and probably even our teachers at school. Yes. Um, when we talk about undocumented, usually we will talk about, um, undocumented migrant, unaccompanied minors. But now we have realized, it's not only foreign children who are affected by this. Yes. And with, um, undocumented migrant and, um, unaccompanied minors, we usually request our embassies, especially in the Sadek area, to assist us with the documentation. But it is so unfortunate that some of the embassies are not assisting us. Now, it's also unfortunate that our laws, home affairs also have issues that, um, they need maybe there are amendments on their sides. Because our children in this country are also classified as stateless. Remember, if you do not have any documentation, you are stateless. You don't know where you belong. Now, what we usually do, Chairperson and members and our community members, we usually refer the matters to our lawyers for human rights. Our social workers, even though it's not our mandate, but most of the cases are brought to D S D. And D S D will then refer our clients to home affairs. And now with whom, with the lawyers for human rights, they are able to intervene on behalf of the children. Or we refer the children to our Center for Child Law because they are focusing only on family law in Pretoria. So that's where we refer these matters because now it, we also cannot assist the children the way we would like them to assist them. Because we refer, like I said, to home affairs. And it's up to home affairs to, you know, assist with documentation. With regard to issues around street kids. We have a center in this, um, area, in this municipality. We have Kakala Dropping Center, which caters for the needs of children living and working on the streets. The department is funding the, the organization Kakala Dropping Center. Yes. And we also had a good initiative in the community in this area. In Tulelang, a dropping center, we had a dropping center, but unfortunately, we cannot get onto that because we had challenges of, of fighting for that center, S D S D. But it's a, it was a court matter. My colleagues have just updated me. Yes. And we are also saying, um, N P Os, remember, N P Os are autonomous. But we also support N P Os and we encourage our community members in our, our structures that they must establish N P Os so that we can establish such dropping centers in our area. And we also have issues around child headed. I would like to appreciate what my, my colleague from the union who raised issues on child headed households. We must understand that most of our, people usually say we have child headed household. A child headed household is a household that is headed by a sixteen year old or below. Yes. And most of the time what we have in our communities is youth headed households. When a social worker intervenes in a household that is so-called child headed. We cannot leave a sixteen year old caring for a child. We make sure that. We make sure that we intervene, we either place a child in alternative care or we identify a supervisor in line with the children's act. To ensure that those children remain with care. We cannot just say it's a child headed household, we provide food person. Because that person doesn't have the capacity. A sixteen year old cannot care for a child. And I also want to comment on the children's parliament. I think one of our community members raised that issue. We will link with her with, we still have children's parliament. It's just that it's not coordinated by D S D, it's coordinated by O R C, Office on the Rights of the Child, which is based in the premier's office. The Office of the Rights of the Child.
Office of the Rights of the Child.
Which is based in the premier's office. It's no longer with D S D. Yes. And the other issue that was raised by our colleagues, it's about issue of, of, um, we, I don't, I don't know how to put them. We usually call them blessers. Chairperson? Sugar daddies. Yes, the Chairperson was coming to that. Yeah. But now what we usually have as a program in D S D, remember, the children's act is more developmental. It's not treatment oriented. Yes. Now we have programs, I think the other gentleman mentioned, but my chief director is here is going to explain more about the school social work. We have a program because prevention, it's what we, we need to be working on. We have a big program in D S D, we call it P E I, Prevention and Early. Early Intervention Program. An Early Intervention Program. What we do in that program is that we usually go to our schools. There are two programs, there's the school social work program, but social workers who work with children. This one is a prevention program where we only focus on teaching our learners how to protect themselves. Yes. Because we have challenges with, we have a lot of perpetrators, pedophiles, and we can't tell. Now we teach our children how to protect themselves. Yes, go to go low. And now what we usually, we've been having challenges with COVID now because of the challenges of COVID now that we cannot have big groups. Because social workers, when they go there, they meet with a big group, like they will take all the grade twelves. And then maybe, you know, educate them about, you know, how to protect themselves and how to care for themselves and against these so-called blessers. The other issues that were raised with that, um, there were two speakers, I think the first two speakers, um, asked questions around offense and vulnerable children. I think they were from the civil society. Yes. Chairperson, we use the word-based model. Where each and every word has a social worker assigned. Yes. In the word base, we encourage our word-based social workers to link with all the resources that are there. Like the first speaker who spoke, he said he's from the word committee. Yes. So we would like to encourage our civil society to link up with us. We have our social work manager with us today, Mehdi Bouo Muklabani. Where is she? She's here. Beautiful, beautiful lady wearing the blue dress. We have for each and every service local offices, Chairperson. We have three local offices that should be here. Now I'm talking about Magwasi. So we have, um, click stop, Madrosana, gir. Politically correct. Madrosana and we have.
Complaining, Honorable.
K'ahore, luna ba totlehi le bo ne ba di re du loa'ho ba na li ta bo ne di go'ore.
We have programs that we are supposed to implement at schools.
Renali mananewa arat shanitohua tse'nyatiriso'unku di kolon.
Because of COVID-19, they don't have access to schools.
Ya no kala ba kala COVID-19, ha ba ko'no'ho, tse'namo di kolon.
We have YOLO programs for young people.
Renali mananewa a'a mananle basha.
And that program is a national program.
E'le na'ole'ule'ule'ule'ula, bo'se'cha ba la na ka yo'the.
And it's centered in northwest.
Le tami le mo'bu ko'ne bu pirima.
It means that you only live once.
Mo'kana'ho'ra'ho'ra'ili'ili'rua ka'we fe'la.
We have the key Maja programs that we must implement.
Renali key Maja program, e'ro shanitohore tse'nyatiriso'.
We have Chomi programs, those are behavior change programs.
Renali Chomi.
That help our children to change their behavior.
Chomi program, e'kama'chomi ya manalitela, e' basha ba it'wara'anga yo'na'ho'ra ba fet'ole'ule it'wara'ja bo.
Young girls must be assertive to be able to say no.
Ba setzana, ba shanitohore, bahani.
Young girls need to be taught they are responsible for their own bodies.
Ba shanitohore, ba ru'ue ma ikara belo ka mebe'le ya bo.
So in terms of school social work, we have delegated thirty-two social workers.
K'ajalo, ma le banali ba di re di loa'ho ba se kolon, re'san'e ro'me tse'ko'sa re chomi le baba ka nan thirty-two.
To, to schools that provide services to learners with disability.
Ho'ra ba ya ku di kolon, k'ha'akamala ka di tiraila, ta basha ba na baba na le bo'ho'le.
So those, all the schools was children with disability in northwest.
Di kolon, zo'te'lo bo'ku ne bu pirima, tse'ri na le bana baba na le bo'ho'le.
They have full-time social worker.
Bana le ba di re du loa'ho ba na ko'eteh'the.
We can avail the list.
Re kalu na, listi ho'ra'ue bo'ne.
So, 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 and I think it's there at Department of Education Provincial Affairs.
E'le ro'me la ho'ra etengole fa pena tu'do.
So, in terms of teen pregnancies.
Me ba le banale ho'ui ma'ha basha.
Oustume'ang talk on it.
E'oustume'ang uile abu'aka yo'na?
Actually, this is a great challenge that we need to attend to.
E'ke'bo'tata jo'bo'ho'lu jo'ro shanitohore meka meka na le bo.
Our department and Department of Education nationally is currently busy with a national strategy to intervene.
Le fa palaronali, le fa palatu'do, le t'wara'ha na li le'ano'la bo'se'cha ba la ho'ra, ba'kararabola, ba'akisakata tarabolo ya mo'ho'se'yo.
But as a provincial department, we also have teen parenting programs where we help these teenagers to take care of their children because they must be children to their parents and they must also be mothers. So how to handle that conflicting role?
Me ha'per, renali le, na'ole'ule'ule nga'ha'pe'le, e'le ho'ra lona le amanale ho'tuza.
What is the program called? Teen Parenting.
E'teen Parenting Program, e'le e'le ho'ra, tuza'ya'lo na ke'ho'ra, ba na ba shanitohore, ha ba le ko'ha'ye ba it'wara'ja ka ba na, me ha'ba se mo'ha'ye, ba si karama ikara belo, ase ba li'nso'na ha ba le kon'ke.
So together with education, we must look into how to strengthen this intervention.
K'ajalo, ro'na mo'ho'le le fa palatu'do, re shanitose'ro bo'ne ho'ra re kalu no'ta'ja'ka'ta tarabolo'ole'eno.
So that all our schools benefit.
E'le ho'ri di kolon, zo'te'zara'na di sol'akala mo'le'ima.
So those are the highlights. I also want to talk on the issue of the food parcels.
Ki rincha'ho'lu tse'ke'ne ke'batlaho di ama, me ha'pa ke'batlaho ama'eno ya di parcela zadi jo.
So, food parcels are not just distributed to people.
E'di parcela zadi jo, ha di ne'ue ba tu'he'la, ho'sa tu'se'pe.
We have to profile those families.
Re shanitohore, ri'ti'pe'le ho'ri ma'la pa, a di t'waka'ya fe.
Before we can give them food parcels.
Pe'le reka di ro'me la ko'ho'bo'ne.
And all the, 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 the monies that we spent on food parcels are audited.
Me ma di o'ke'ale'ho'ra, adrisa du'a ho'ra reka di parcela zane zadi jo, e'a'a reko'ti.
So from our department's side, we have to ensure that it goes to the people who meet the criteria.
K'ajalo, ho'ra mo'le fa penlaro'na, re shanitohore, thama'misa ho'ra di jo, tse'nu di akupatombai, e'le ho'ra, ba si kere'le tse'ri ba'tla'falo sa, baba shanitohore, ho'ri ya mo'ha'ya.
Thank you so much.
Ki ya le bo'ha.
Thank you very much, Sook Dev.
Renali bo'chile'ho'me na'ha'ne.
Now, I will give over to the honorable members just to have some bite in terms of explaining few things.
Ya no, re'ata ho'ro lama'lo ko'arona ho'ra, ba tse'me tse'cho'ana fa'la'ho'ka'halo sa, di'ka di le pe'di di'le t'aro.
Okay, I'll start with Honorable Motawu.
Ar'simola ka'mo to'ke'hi Motawu.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Ya ho'le bo'ha mo'du'la stulo.
K'ikale'ki le bo he, k'ikale'ki le bo he department about the responses to the community.
Let me start by thanking the department for your responses to the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
But there's a gap between the department and the community.
Be'ho'wo'na la'ho'na li, pa talasakala, fa'harakala fa'pa, le ma'lo bo'as'cha'va.
Maybe it's because of the COVID-19. At least the president yesterday allowed us to have two fifty inside and outside five hundred.
Ya ka'ha'bo president, dema ba'ne e'le arletla ho'ra moting, renali ba ta'ali two fifty, me ba'li two hundred and fifty ku'ante.
Also, community, you need to play a very crucial role in terms of your documentation.
Lona ya ka'ba'lo ko'as'cha'va, re shanitohore, le ke'ho'si karama ikara belo, alu na, arat amokha'nyen ya di document.
It is also your responsibility to take part.
Ki, le, le, ki bu ikara belo ba'alu na, ho'ra luna le tse'ka'ro lo mo'ho'se'yo.
And also to the department.
Me ho'lo na'le fa'pa.
Ne'ke'ko'pa ho'ra, if you can have an outreach program with the Department of Education.
Ne'ke'ko'pa ho'ra.
Home Affairs.
If you can have an outreach program of the Department of Education and the Department of Home Affairs.
And other departments.
Mo'ho'le ba fa'pa ama'we.
And also, thank you very much for the contributions, community.
Renali bo'ha, la tata ha'pe di twa'eloe'ze' di'ntitu'en ke'lo'na ma'lo ko'as'cha'va.
We know your frustrations.
Ra'itohore, lu, duze'ka ma tata halun tse'ya.
So we are here.
Be'refano.
We are here to assist in any way.
Refano, ho'ra'ho'lu tuza'ka'one.
Hence the bill.
Ki'ala ba kala'ore ku'adi'le mo'la'okakanwa'ho.
Our bill comrades, it's your responsibility.
Mo'la'okakanwa'ho'no'ho, ba'ha'isuki, bu'ikara belo ja'alu na.
The protection of our children.
Ho'sire'le'za ba na barona.
The protection of our children.
Ho'sire'le'za ba na barona.
It's very crucial.
Se'lo'se'vo t'opata.
And also.
Me bil'ha'pe.
Congratulating Tate'wa Union.
I enjoyed gentlemen from the union.
The way Abu'ilenkating wa'aha ibile wa re educate.
The way he expressed himself, he was very upbuilding and very educative.
So ki'bil ya ba, ba South Africa ka'fe.
So this is a bill for all the South African children.
N'totze'le langa'zo'na.
The things that you are complaining about.
The bill.
The bill.
It'll protect abana'varo.
It's going to protect those children.
So, you know, ho'ra meeting, oh contribute, obe, le ho'cho'ho'ra, na'ke bona'ho'ra, retama'echi. Your contributions it'la'ke'na tse'ri in talon, hasa redutifati as committee, hasa really busyka'bi.
So come into the meeting and then maybe you express yourself to say that this is how you see things should be done and all those comments that you may have made are going to be obviously implemented after us as a community would have been able to sit down and consider those comments and contributions you made.
Tate'wa Ward Committee, okay.
A gentleman from the Ward Committee.
Renali bo'ha, Tate'wa Ward Committee, Mosebet Waho as a ward committee is to advise the councilor.
Thank you very much because we know that your work as a ward committee is to advise the council.
Yes. Also, you must assist the communities in terms of door-to-doors and also the, the food parcels.
Ha'pe re ko'pa ho'ra, o ba tu'se' mo'se'cha bing, ka'kanya ho'ra tama'ya, kan'ju'len'ku'ho'abu'ya di parcela zadi jo.
E'ho ba ni department di te ba verify, out only food parcels before verification.
K'ala ba kala ho'ra, eteng department de ho'ne'tefata, there is no one who gets food parcel, ho'sa ne'tefadi'ua.
E' and the food parcels get everyone.
E'le ho'po'la ho'ra.
Ba ma, ba tu'pe'le.
Ba ba.
Basa'ho'ni, agirin Tate'wa Ward Committee.
So it is for.
Renali bo.
It is for those families that are struggling.
Yes. So each and every person, if lenalidi challenges in terms of food parcels, me'ya go'ya department di'ibuleh.
Ha'le ho'ra rocha'fe'la ba'temu'ha'ra'ha'ra baba na le ma tata ka di food parcel, it'sin ho'ra le fa'pa, le'ten ho'ri tuza.
Hunalidi institutions, le mas'pala waro na municipalities, haridi sebedi se.
Please use our institutions and municipalities.
In terms of ECD.
Ma le banali di ECD.
Ki chief, akitzi'be, ekari ki chief, oh explaining ho'ra, decide, hunalidi ba'tu ba di t'ola, re'lamale'ele fe'la ho'la'te'la mo'la'ow.
I can't remember very well.
Ho'ra ready access a'joa, agir.
I can't remember very well whether it was the chief who explained.
Yeah, but the department is here, ba'tali tu'sa.
So.
I could. My department di te ba arabe'le mo'bar ba tu'sa.
The department is here.
Okay, it's fine here. Yeah, let's start using them now. Yeah, let's start using them now. Reska'ra ba useless, harika'len're ba sebedi, and then if abba respond, that's when her re kabuwang to'tse'ri.
So ar'simola ho'ri di dirisa'ho'na no'pileri ba useless, e'ra hara ba'le'ze' ibera ka'ho'na'ho'ta'lo sa ho'ra ho'ra'ing ribu'ya ja'lo.
Department la'utwa'orbala, e'mpaga tu'ala'ze.
So the complaining.
Okay, yo'oda he, okay, okay.
So re'ko'pa, re'ko'pa bo'la'ole'tola, ba ba'ha'isu'chisi balo.
Re'ko'pa ho'ra he, department la'utwa'mpaga tu'la'joa.
So.
Aba'ho'to'fala ho'ha.
So the department, I'm sure you can see.
And if they are right or but only services from the department.
You can see how unhappy they are and then they, they are right to get their service, just take note of that.
Ki'ali bo, department le ma'me tse'agir.
Thank you, the department. You paying attention to that?
Ki'ali bo.
Thank you so much.
All right, all right, all right.
Okay, renali bo'ha, I bear, I, I bear my rumo ha'ts.
Can I give over to Honorable Letitia?
E're'ke'ko'pe motote'hi Letitia, ho'tra'ela.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Ki'ali bo'ha mo'du'la stulo.
Chairperson. This thing of young girls involved with older men.
E'ha'ie, mo'du'la stulo ya ba setzana ba'ani ya ne, ba baratanali ba ho'lu.
We have hear this in the previous hearings where we did go.
Ri'utu'ila ku di ko'ko'ana tse'ri tse'ro shan'ko'ho'zo'ne.
I think the biggest challenge in this northwest province is the socioeconomic crisis that this province is facing.
Ki'akanya ho'ra ba tata bo'ku ho'lo mo'bu ko'ne bu pirima, k'ho'ra ho'na'la ma tata alu'ho'di kolon.
But more especially unemployment.
E'le so'ho'lo bo'ho'lo ba basaberke.
And older men are capitalized on that.
Ible'banana ba ho'lo ba dirisa'cho'ne'ee'wo.
One of the, one of the community members did raise the issue of transport of social workers.
Mo'we wa, le'lo ko'las'cha ba uile abu'aka ma tata a di palawa.
That's a challenge chair because this, these services are much needed.
Ho'ra ki'bo tata bo'ku ho'lo k'ho'ne di t'ro'le tse'ri tse'ri t'ja'le di t'waka'ha fe'la tata.
It's about time that parents must take responsibility for their teenagers.
Ya no, ba'tla'ho'ra ba'tzari le bo'ne ba'ka ba si karama ikara belo, is'ze'le na'ku'ha'ho'ri di raja'lo ya no.
Because teenage pregnancy has become an acceptable norm in our society.
K'ho'ne ba tata fa'na fa'ke'ho'ra huimaha basha, ya no is'ze'ho'li jo'ya ka'ike'te'kesu'lo se'lo'se'ho'le'le fe'la sis'yami.
We cannot come here to say, to whether children's amendment bill and say that children under eighteen are minor children, but yet when we look at the statistics of teenage pregnancies, it's sky high.
So re'ka, re'ka'irata fa'na fa'ra'tla ho'bu'ya ho'ra mo'la'okakanwa'ho'wa re basha, baba ka'fa'as'ha di, wa'ha'di le eighteen, is'antana e'le ba na, me'ho'ne hara'le ba rabona ho'ra huimaha bo'ne pa'lo ya t'engi ya'cho'sa, ko'ho'di mo'ta'ta.
As this will seek to protect our children under eighteen years.
Ible'le mo'la'okakanwa'ho'no'ubika'le'lo ba'ho'ne ko'ho'sire'le'za ba na, baba ka'fa'as'ha, di'wa'ha ze'wo'ze' eighteen.
There's really a need for the Department of Social Development to engage with the Department of Education specifically because education is the right. It cannot be that children when they come to metrik, they cannot write metrik exams because of the fact that they don't have birth certificates.
Ho'na'le tiru e' shanitohore ho'ri di ru'a'ke'le fa'pa la ka'bo'lo'lo lo'a'ho'le, le fa'pa la tu'do, k'ala ba kala ho'ra ma tata a'ho'ra ba na, ha'ba'se'ba'fi'ka go'ho'ko'aling, e'ni ka'ke'ho'ba'za'mora'za metrik, ha ba ko'no'ho'ko'ala k'ala ba ka'fa'la la'ho'ra ba'sna'ma'ko'ala, a'cho'ke'ha, se'lo'se'ho'ra shanitohore, se'le'jo'ka'li'cho'le'len'cho'cho.
And, and engagement with Salga, we really need to engage with Salga because the municipality must play their roles in the ECDs.
Ha'pe re shanitohore, re dirisa'ne tata le Salga k'ala ba kala ho'ra mas'pala, o shanitohore, ana'le'syabi, se'lo'se'to'na mo'.
To provide stands for the ECD.
ECD, ho'ra ba'tla'la ma fe'la, abaka tama'isa di ECD mo'ho'one.
Yes, and we all are very much aware that this country, there's about more than fourteen million people that are food insecure in this country. And yes, when children go from school, many of them don't have anything, the only meal that they get is that meal at schools.
Ible'le ra'ho'na ho'ri.
So that is really urgent need and we need, as social development, we need to look at how can the CNDCs accommodate these children to get, to give them an extra meal. Thank you.
Ible'le ra'itohore, na'ha'eno ya'na'ana ba ta'ba'ba fe'tan fourteen million and baba n'tse'ba'ba na ba'na'la mo'ta'ta ja'tra'ela ya di jo. K'ajalo, re shanitohore, tse'ri di sama'ya ma'ho'wo'na ho'ra ba na, baba yang ku di kolon, ba'ka fe'pi'ya ja'ka di jo, tse'ri ka'ba'le kana, so ma fa'pa ka'bo'be'idi la ka'bo'lo'lo lo'a'ho'le, la tu'do, atla shan'ko'ho'ra ha'pe, agirisa'na mo'ho'mon ke'ne'ee'wo ho'ra'arabola ba tata jo'no.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Ki'ali bo'ha mo'du'la stulo.
I wanna thank you for your valuable inputs today.
Renali bo'ha la di twa'eloe'za, talu na tse'ri bo'cho'pa'ho'umpie.
Over the past couple of days.
Mo'ma'la tse'ke'ala ma'la afitile'ano.
There's been an overarching theme in northwest.
Huila ka'la'ha'ha'ho'lo, mo'bo'ko'ne bu pirima yo'the.
And that is the plight of undocumented children.
Me ki'bo tata jo ba na, baba sa'ku'adi siwa'ba'ho'za baba'sna'ma'ko'ano.
In need of birth certificates and IDs.
Ya ka, ho'ta'ka'ha bo'ne di birth certificate, li di ID.
We need to urgently look at illegal foreign nationals and our porous borders.
Re shanitohore, kapotla ko'ri'lebe, e'ba'ba tse'namo na'ha'nyaro'na, e'ise'ka famola'wo, le ho'ba'na ho'ri, ho'tlayang ho'ra ba'tu ba su'the'le'le me'le'lo'ana'ya'ro na ho'ra tse'namo Africa bo'ra, re ba'tla ho'potla kisa'ha'nyee'wo.
Cause this is mainly the driving force that exacerbates the problem of undocumented children who as a result cannot attend school or receive the child support grant.
K'ho'ne bo'emo'jo'ni jo'ki'bo'ne bo'bo'ha'ka'za'ng ba tata jo ho'ra, renali ba na, baba sa'ho'no'ho'bo'na li, chiso'ya ma di azan'ku, e'pusong, ho'za'ma'ko'ala, abato'ka ho'na'lo'one. K'ajalo, re shanitohore, re'lebe in'ha'ee'wo.
There's also a desperate need for social psycho support for orphaned learners who lost their parents due to COVID-19.
Ha'pe ho'na'la t'ho'ke'ho'le, e'ho'lo tata ya ho'ta'ko'mela ba na, ba e'le ma si'ela, le ba ba na'li di'ku'ha'ye'lo, tse'ri ba kilu'en ki' COVID-19, baba, baba, baba shanitohore tse'na di kolon.
Regarding the sexual exploitation of young girls and street kids.
Ma le banali ba na, baba tse'ke'mo'mi bileng, le ba ba sotwa'ankatoba'la no.
There needs to be a collaborated effort between DSD and our sister departments like Home Affairs, Justice, Health and Education.
Re shanitohore, ho'na'le dirisa'no mo'ho'fa'harakala fa'pa la DSD, le fa'pa la mira'roya'se le'ha'ye, le fa'pa la bus'yamisi, le ma fa'pa ama'ho'ra'arabola ba tata jo'no.
We need to strengthen intergovernmental relations as in today with these sister departments.
K'ajalo, ma fa'pa ano, ar'dirisa'na mo'ho'lo'ona, re shanitohore, tota'ha'ha ba tse', e'dirisa'na mo'ho', mo'fu'ja'ho'ri dirisa'na mo'ho', o'ranalone le bo'ne.
If we don't, and I'm sad to say.
E'ha'le ho'ra harakla ho'ri di raja'lo, ki'tuza'bo'cho'ke'ho'ra inkat'halo sa k'ere.
We will end up with a generation of undocumented, unschooled children subjected to a lifetime of poverty in northwest.
Atla fe'le'za renali ba na, baba'sna'ma'ko'alo, baba sa'ku'adi siwang, baba ta'cela mo'tselo, jo'ch'jo'ch'jo'ba'ho'ne ba'sarute'ha, i'ble ba'tsela'la muli hu'meng lan'taya'cho'ho.
Ki'ali bo'ha.
Thank you. Ki'ali bo'ha. Thank you, everyone.
Ki'ali bo'ha tata mo'du'la stulo.
I want to thank very much our Chairperson.
Ki'ali bo'ha le'le, le fa'pa la DSD.
Also say thank you very much to our DSD department.
Karata ho'ta'lo sa in'ha'ye, ha'ke'ba tu'hu'bu'ha ka'ho'ra na'ke'mo'wa mo' northwest.
I want to explain this point. I don't necessarily want to say that I'm someone who hails from northwest.
Rona'le'le northwest.
We, as the northwest people.
Redika'ha'nye di'tu'eki, ki'di bordera di'le t'aro.
Are surrounded by three borders.
And then re, re mo' mining area.
We are actually in a mining area.
Ha'wat e, e, that belt, yeah, platinum belt, ho'te'ua'rona es northwest.
When they speak about the platinum, platinum belt, they are actually referring to us people in the northwest.
K'ajalo.
Therefore.
Ha'ho'ki'la, ha'ho'bo'no'lo tata ho'ra ro'ho'ne, ho'fedisa, ba'tu baba'sna'ng ma'ko'alo it'hu'bo, ka'ho'ra ba'tu ba, ba tse'na is'eka formula'oo.
It is not very easy to get rid of the people who don't have their IDs, simply for the reason that people actually do get infiltrated into the country illegally.
So haso'ho'ra, hara'ze' ma'ta'ap.
And this does not mean that we are not doing anything about it.
Karata, ne'ke'fiti san'cha'yo, karata ho'ra mo' bha'ing ba mo' Makwasi, yeah, Mo Makwasi.
I wanted to pass on that point. Actually, I want to say that from among the Makwasi residents.
Renali officia'parlament.
We do have a parliamentary office.
Mo'ka'ro'onge'ya'lo'na.
It is here in your section.
Me'ode, on, ole' mo' officine'yo, ki'me, e, Adios.
The, the lady who's in that office is Miss Adios.
Ki'ena ole'de mo' ma'tata ama'wa'ha'le te'lo ho'ra parlament de, e, de, officie'wo, iti'rezua'ana ma'ba'ka ama'wa'ala'ha'lo samu.
So she is right there. In fact, she, she doesn't have to wait for the parliament to visit if there are some of the problems, but she does take an initiative and that office is waiting for the problems that you have to take them there.
Hunalidi fieldwork amote'emo'to'ama'ya mo' mo'di ho'do'nsa'zalo'nat.
Also, we have a field worker, which means someone who actually keeps visiting your wards.
Ne'ke'le'li di'risa'officie'yo.
I want to say that please use that office.
Renali offici'ku'a JB Maxx.
We have that office at JB Maxx.
Ko'JB Maxx, renali mototlehi Kula.
And then at JB Maxx, we have Honorable Kula.
Renali mototlehi Desbo'mo'ho'no.
We have Honorable Desbo'mo'ho'no.
Le'ona officie'wo iti'risa'ung baba'san ka'ka'ko'JB Maxx.
Please put that office to a good use, that is, people who are coming from JB Maxx area.
Renali offici'ku'at'lexdop.
And then we have an office in Clarkstop.
Kuat'lexdop, unfortunately motu'at'ung resign and tse'ke'communicator le'ona'la, le'bel'la ho'ra, e, ke'ma'ong ot'lot'iswa'ang kote'ba'ali tisina ko'esa'fe'disinpe.
Now unfortunately, at Clarkstop, the person working in that office has resigned. I've been communicating with them. With time, will be, it will be made known to us as to who is then going to occupy that spot.
Baba'we le'bona'ekuet'le twa'ol'ele'ring, EANC constituency office.
Some of you may have seen it. It is marked EANC constituency office.
Ki'di memberata parlament de tse'ri le mo'.
So it's members of the parliament who are in there.
Baba di rang ka, ka di lo'ze'ri wuteli di la.
Who listens to some of your complaints.
Agir'i, kirela ho'ra, le skela'ya emela ba'tu baba'wa ba'zu'aku'ka'ba'za'ko'lo'na kana, la skela, la emela, the social development because banali meroko munsi'oba'udira.
I'm saying this so that you don't have to wait for people to come from somewhere or to have to wait for the Department of Social Development to come and help you. They have a lot of work in their hands.
Especially kirela ho'ra li'di di'risese'ka tata'ea'ya di ID.
And I'm saying, actually put them to a good use, especially with regard to the IDs.
Le di t'ho'ke'ho'ze'ri wutabo'ze'ri.
And many of your life deeds.
Ki'ali bo'ha mo'du'la stilo.
Thank you, Chair.
Orano sa'opidi'at.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Re'le bo'ha tata.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Renali bo'ha mo'du'la stulo.
And thank you to the officials from the Department of Social Development.
Re ba'tla'ho'le ba ka'anki'di baba'san'ku'le fa pena ka'bo'lo'lo lo'a'ho.
And thank you very much to our VVIPs.
Re'be'le'le bo'ha li'di VVIP.
For your contributions, your questions, your input.
Renali bo'ha tse'ri di twa'eloe'za'lo'na, ba t'se'nyaha'ha alu na, li'di kakansha'za'lo'na.
And I was listening attentively. Most of you, you supported the bill with amendments.
Ki, ne'ke'ri'ise'ka'ke'lo t'ho'ko' tata, ke'le mu'ho'le ho'ra ba'le banse'ba'lo'na, lu amokala mo'la'okakanwa, o'tsin'ze'ri ka'bo'lo'lo tse'ri di'ri'le.
Thank you once more.
Ki'ali le bo'ha tata.
There is one speaker who spoke about our coming.
Si'bu'iseng, si'bu'ile ka'ho'ta'haro'na.
To say we are coming here because we are towards elections.
Ar'ri'le'fano fe'la ka'ho'ra re'ha'fe'li di t'ho'ho.
I also want to clarify that.
Ki'batla ho'ta'lo san'cha'yo sen.
As members of the portfolio committee.
Rona'ja'kama'lo ko'ha'ap portfolio committee.
We were supposed to come here in June.
Ne're shanitohore ka'bo'ri'ri t'ileka June.
We went to Lipombo and Pumalanga.
Ri'li'ra, ri'raya Limpo'po re'ber'yan Pumalanga.
From Pumalanga, we're supposed to come here.
Haro t'wa' Pumalanga, ne're shanitohore ho'ta'fa.
But because of the rise of COVID.
Me'kan'k'ya'ho'ke'ze'ha'ha COVID.
Parliament advised that we, we don't have to undergo that, a trip. That's why we are here today.
Parlament de den ile'ara ha'ko'la ho'ra reska'ra'cha'ra'retzamu se'pe'le, oh, me'ke'kalu na'le ba kala'ore le'ofano, ho'umpie.
I won't deny that we are politicians.
Ha'ke, ha'na'le'le'k'ya'ho'ra, er'bo'ne.
We are members because we are, we, we were politicians or we're still politicians, but our coming here does, does got, does have nothing to do with elections.
K'ajalo, le'le t'ho'ko'ho'ra t'fa'na'fa, ha'ha'ama'ne ka'ho'pe'li di t'ho'po, se'li t'is'ho'ri di'at.
It is true from tomorrow onwards.
Ki, ki'ho'to'ha, ki'bo'ha maru'ru'ho'to'ha ka'mo'se'ho'ya'pe'le.
Will be on the field.
Atla be'le'le mo'ti'wo.
Low being very strong.
Re'le'ho'wo'lo'ho.
But today.
Me'ho'umpie'no'ho'ne.
We are here because of the people.
Refano'fa kan'ta'ya mo'la'okakanwa.
I think that one is clear.
E'ke'le se'lo fe'la ho'ra, se'wo si'ku'eh, si'ku'ha'ha tse'senke.
I want also to clarify the issue of food parcels.
E'we'ke'batla ho'ra t'halo sa senke ba'ha'ze'ke'ha'ya'di parcela zadi jo.
That food parcels are not distributed only by the Department of Social Development.
Ha'di abu'ifela ke'le fa'pa la ka'bo'lo'lo lo'a'ho, di parcela tse'ro zadi jo.
Sometimes when we see councilors distributing food parcels, the food parcels are not coming from the, from Department of Social Development.
K'na'ko'ngare'ba'na mo'counsellora anze'aa ba di parcela zadi jo, ha'di'li di'chu'a'ko'le fa pena ka'bo'lo'lo lo'a'ho di jo.
For social development, social workers should be there.
E'ha'le mo'k'anyaya'la fa'pa la ka'bo'lo'lo lo'a'ho, ba di re du lo'a'ho, e'shan'te'ne'bo'ne baba di ran'tiro'ee'wo.
Since they've indicated, because the department need to profile their family in order to make sure that they are giving to the relevant people.
K'ala ba kala ho'ra ki'bo'ne ba shanitohore ho'zaya' di'ka'kama'la, ba a'shan'ale'ha'ang, e'le ho'ra ba thama'misa ho'ra ba di sa'ho'ho' t'hanithe.
So sometimes food parcel, you'll see food parcel being distributed by people who went out to look for donors and they get food parcels in order to give to the people whom they think they have also profiled and feel that they are relevant for that.
K'na'ko'ngoa'otla fi'kala, di'jo'zeno'za di parcela, di parcela zadi jo di abu'ya'ke ba'tu ba'ile'ho'ra ba'ile'ba, to'ba'ya'ho'ko'pa di ka'to'le ho'ko'la'ka'lo'ma'adi. Baba fe'le'za ba'ne'ilue' di parcela zadi jo, bo'ne ba ba'ta'ba'ya'ho'di naya'ba'ho ba dumelan'ho'ra, ki'bo'ne ba shan'ale'ha'la'ho'di naya'wa.
Municipalities also do that.
Bo'mas'pala le bo'ne ba di'raya'alo.
Ba Red Cross also does that.
Ba le fa'pa, ho'ta'la Red Cross le'lo'ne li di'ra'ja'lo.
Even the give, gifts of givers.
E' the gift of the giver, se'ka'ha'ri it'ile'bo'ne.
Issue of documentation, I think a lot of members have spoken about it.
Ho'na'le e'we e'ba logo, ale banse'as'as'eng abu'ile tata ka'yo'ne.
And the challenge is not only from here in the northwest.
Me'bo tata, ha'bo'mo'bu ko'ne bu pirima fe'la.
It's all over the country.
Bo'ana'le na'ha'yo'the.
And it is a challenge. And also, we don't have to forget that also the South Africans. No, thank you. So, this thing, we must look into it in two different ways. A member of SADU spoke also of free education in the ECDs. I just want to align myself with you that it will be a good thing. But we must also consider the mushrooming of ECDs. Also minding the issue of compliance. Because there are most ECDs that are mushrooming because if somebody failed to get work... One will think of starting an ECD. Not thinking about these other issues that are needed before one can say, "I'm having the ECD which is compliant." Listening to the number that has been said by the official from the department is a very big number. So if you can get the overall number of the country... That's where we can realize and think about the money that is being spent towards ECDs only. And some of the issues that has been raised here, it's not for social development, but it can also be taken to the relevant department. Like issue of documentation. Department of Home Affairs need to be contacted or as the portfolio committee will be giving the issues that has been raised here to them in order to take care of it. The last issue, issue of sugar daddies. I do believe that some of them, we know them. We are staying with them. Even the kids, it's our kids. Because in our culture, any child is your child. My question is... What is it that we are doing as community members to assist these kids? Or what is it that we are planning to assist our municipalities when coming up with the bylaws in order to make sure that they guard against this? And also the issue of taverns. I think taverns also is some of the things that makes these things that we are talking about today. And it's our taverns. We forget about our kids. But we'll come back again to say there is this happening. What is it that need to be turned towards taverns that are closer to our schools, even the time of operation? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, honourable members. You've said a lot. I have just been reminded that there is no lunch yet. So I must fast-track and fast-forward to the meeting. But I like the way the meeting ends. What are you doing about what is happening in our communities? The mothers that are selling fat cakes and muffins that have got tick and drugs inside sweets and everything are from our communities. But we allow them to go and sell those things. I'm not going to say anything for now. But I'm leaving you as KK to have homeworks and think about this. You expect government people like us, the department itself, to do wonders whilst all these are coming from our communities? Yes, we will do our best to assist in terms of the policies, the ads and everything. Maybe let's also request the social workers that are here, ma'am. At least to attend on these few issues that are very critical. Honorable Mangani has assisted us in terms of telling where the offices are. From today after our visit, we want to see the change. We don't want to hear on what you were saying in terms of the useless offices and all that stuff. When we come back again or any other committee comes back again, you have to tell them a different story than today's show. I'm that particular person who wants to name and shame a person and don't generalize. If Office A or Office B is not working, tell us directly which office is not functioning the way that we are expecting. All these offices honorable Jane has mentioned are the offices that will assist us and also who are interlinked with them. Yeah, definitely, we've got plus minus fifteen minutes which we will allow the social workers at least to attend in the critical issues that you have raised. If they can't sort them today, definitely they will give you on when are they going to sort those. I wish to thank you everyone in the meeting. Yes, of course, you were a humble and disciplined audience. Yes, and the committee member or what committee member must bear with us. We cannot allow to go on and go on and go on. If he wants to say something, he can meet us on the way to our combis and raise what he wants. Other people are diabetic, others are hypertensive, so they need to have, it's after one now. This meeting should have been closed by one o'clock. What I will do is to give the what committee member for him to thank all of us, not any other thing. If something else... Thank you, Chair. Honorable members of the parliament. Thank you very much to the honourable members of the parliament, I thank you. Honorable public members. The honourable members of the public from all the departments. I want to say we are very thankful, honourable members. All the inputs that they have brought. It is an education to us. We are very thankful for your efforts. To come and educate us. One another thing, when I say that now, I just want to say something for one minute. I just want to say I'm very much sorry. I'm an adult and I'm a veteran. On behalf of my brother, when he said the departments are lying. It cannot be correct just to hear one of the members saying that the departments are lying and leave it that way. We had to apologize. I apologize as a veteran that now. We are very much sorry to hear this kind of the attack. One of the things is that if we don't understand... We must go to different offices as the honourable members have just explained to us. If I do not have an information about something... I cannot say that another speaker is lying. It is because of my ignorance. So I'm very much sorry. I apologize to the house and to the all members of the department. And then, at the end, I support the bid because now as I was browsing the pamphlet, I saw that it's very much for me. And to approve it. Thank you very much. Alright, thank you veteran, thank you veteran. Yeah, you mustn't spoil it. Oh no, oh no, oh no, oh no. My mother, I'm told by the department that they have organized something to just... It's like finger lunch. So, we will request you, you will be directed where you are going to get that and it means that the meeting has adjourned. Thank you very much. Sorry Chair, sorry Chair, with your permission, I think there's a comment that... No comment, no comment. No comment, the meeting has adjourned.